Hello.
Hi, Mr. Duffy.
How are you?
Good, ready to get started. I think we're only missing trustee Cuevas.
Okay.
We shall join us shortly. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. I would like to call to order the June 30th, 2020 special board meeting of the West Coast University and Physical District Board of Education. Thank you for joining us this evening. Mr. Watson, do we have any public comment for closed session?
President Hernandez Jarvis, we do not have any public comment for a closed session.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walton. Okay, so we are going to recess to closed session and we'll be back for open session at 6:30. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our meeting. I think our superintendent Duffy is still in the process of joining us right now. I see trustee Phillips, trustee Bunnas, trustee Cuevas, and trustee Lara are present, so we will get started with our meeting as soon as we have superintendent Duffy sign into the meeting, too. Thank you and welcome us again.
And just a quick note for the board, I was able to connect with trustee Laura and confirm the report out.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy, and I will call the meeting to order in just one brief second. I have to close a window nearby because there's a lot of noise, so I'll be right back. Thank you, everybody. Again, good evening and welcome to our board meeting. I would like to call to order the June 30th, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Education of the West Coast University and Physical District, Board of Education. Thank you for joining us tonight. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome again and thank you for joining us tonight. I would like to thank our WCCZ students, families, employees, and the entire community for how you have continued to support each other these past few weeks. Thank you to everybody working with urgency to ensure that children in our communities are safe and healthy during the summer months. I would like to share some basic instructions regarding how we're going to be using Zoom today for our meeting. And before we do that, no, yes, we're going to do this right now and then we'll do roll call right after that. Sorry about that. And we're going to have public comments verbally during our meeting via Zoom. This may result in some uncomfortable situations, so we hope that you will bear with us. And it is our hope for board members of the public to be able to participate and share their public comments with the board in a space conducive to a respectful public forum for all. All board members and the superintendent will be on video throughout the board meeting. Staff members are also present and will be on video. Members of the public will not be on video and will be muted throughout the meeting unless they have raised their hand for public comment. In order to comment on an agenda item at tonight's meeting, members of the public should raise their hand by pressing the Raise Your Hand button on the Zoom app or by pressing asterisk or star nine by telephone when the board reaches the item on which they would like to comment. If you are calling in with your phone, when your name is called, press asterisk or star six to unmute your phone. When we get to the item, a member of the district staff will call your name. Comments will be restricted to the amount of time allocated by board policy. Your hand must be raised before the first public comment is read on an agenda item. After the first comment is read, there will be no additional public comments accepted. In order to be recognized to speak, you must be using a first and last name. Thank you. I will now share these directions in Spanish. Para hacer un comentario sobre un artículo en la agenda, se le pide al público que por favor levante su mano al presionar el botón de levantar la mano en la aplicación de Zoom, o al presionar estrella o asterisco nueve por teléfono cuando lleguemos al artículo del que quiera comentar. Si está llamando por teléfono, por favor, presione estrella o asterisco seis para aprender el micrófono de su teléfono. Cuando lleguemos a ese artículo en la agenda, un personal del distrito escolar llamará su nombre. Los comentarios serán restringidos al tiempo asignado por las normas de la mesa directiva. Tu mano debe estar levantada antes de que el primer comentario se haga en ese artículo. Después de que el primer comentario sea leído, no se aceptarán comentarios adicionales. Para ser reconocida, reconocido, reconocida, para hacer un comentario debe usar un nombre y apellido. Gracias. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Duffy, can we please have roll call?
Yes, President Hernandez Jarvis.
Present.
Trustee Laura.
Present.
Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Trustee Panis.
Present.
Trustee Cuevas.
Here.
Great.
Thank you. Do we have student representatives present?
I don't see them, or I don't see him.
Thank you. Great, so our next item is reported of closed session.
Yes, tonight we have a number of items to report out of closed session. The first item, by a vote, the board has identified a finalist for chief academic officer with trustee Hernandez Jarvis, Cuevas, Laura, and Panis supporting and trustee Phillips dissenting. The appointment shall be done as an action item for ratification at the next regularly scheduled board meeting on July 15. The second item, the board appointed Kristen Hardy as SLP director for the 2021 school year unanimously. And finally, the board approved unanimously Maria Duarte Ruiz as an assistant principal at Deans High School. That is the end of the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. Next, we have our agenda review and adoption for item B5. Do any board members have any items that they wanted pulled? It seems like we have a very short agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as is?
We adopt the agenda as is.
Moved by trustee Bunnas.
Seconded by.
Seconded by trustee Lara. Can you please take a vote?
Of us, yes.
Phillips, yes.
And I say.
Lara, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda as is. Thank you, board. Up next, we have item B6, WCCZ public comment.
Yes, President Hernandez Jarvis, at this time, we have one speaker with their hand raised.
Thank you.
That would be Leslie Reckler.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Reckler?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to thank Dr. Delgado for all her years of service to the district. I believe tonight is her last board meeting, her last day of work for the district, and I've just enjoyed her so much. Her educating the parents, always coming out whenever we needed her to come out and educate on any issue, charter issues, the number of times that she spoke to PTA, and I will miss her very much, and I thank her for her service. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. I will remind the audience that you must have at least, you must have a first and last name in order to be recognized to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Walton, and thank you to Ms. Reckler for your comment as well. So our first discussion item, item C1, our only discussion item, African-American student achievement.
Good evening, board and community. I am going to be leading this presentation this evening. We did not get a chance to get to this presentation at our last meeting, so I'm really glad that we're able to get to it at a much more reasonable hour. I do want to thank a number of people who helped put this presentation together. Nicole Joyner and the data team, LaShante Smith and Millie Burns on the positive climate team, the Mafanikio team, Dr. Guerrero, asset leaders, Bobby Jordan, Reverend Shoemake, and Jamie Allardice of the Niestram team, and many, many African-American staff who've given feedback and suggestions about how we move this work forward. This is work that people have been doing for many, many years in this district. There's incredible, incredible energy and effort all across our district by so many people. And I'm excited to continue to share what we're doing and where we need to get better and what our next steps are. So I'm going to ask Marcus or Tracy to go ahead and bring up that presentation. I will say, we had a presentation on the work we were doing a few weeks back around African-American student achievement, and we got some feedback that folks wanted something more comprehensive, more data, just a better outline of what we were doing and where we needed to go. So I hope this evening we're able to present the work in progress, the work over the last few years, and talk about where we're going next. For me, it continues to be an incredible honor and privilege to lead the work, to lead the community, to be allowed into this community, and to be able to have our students and families given to us the great honor of educating them every day. And it is a real honor and a privilege. So I thank our community for continuing to believe in us. So let's go to our first slide. So Mr. Panis has constantly asked us to make sure we have a good executive summary and really summarize what we're talking about in our presentation. And this one I'm going to read. I'm not going to read all of our slides because there is a lot in here, but African-American students in our district do not perform equal to their peers. Over the past five years and beyond, supports have been put in place to support African-American students. African-American students in the district have made some growth, but overall continue to trail peers of other races and ethnicities. Growth has been made in school climate and high school graduation, but academic scores and attendance continue to be significant issues for the district. Focused work to support African-American students has taken place in the areas of positive school climate, after-school programs, college access programs, and targeted school support. While the number of African-American teachers and administrators closely reflect the student population, there are many schools that have few to zero African-American teachers in the school. As a result of the African-American resolution, as well as the dedication of the board and the community, additional resources will be in place to support African-American students next year. Decisions about exactly what will be provided with these additional resources are still to be determined. We can move to our next slide. These are slides that the board knows, so I won't spend too much time on them, but for the purposes of this discussion, we're about 15% African-American. We can move on to our next slide. We can move on to our next slide. Wanted to make sure the board and community had an idea of the African-American student enrollment across the district. And you can see on this slide, the schools with the highest percentage of African-American students on the left and the schools with the highest total number of African-American students on the right. We can move to the next slide. This is a slide about African-American staff. And you can see the schools with the most African-American teachers, the schools with that, you see that by elementary, middle, and high. And then you'll also see schools that have zero or one African-American teacher. I believe we have that wrong, I think, at Olinda, that they have one African-American teacher. So if there's any errors here, I apologize for that, but it's meant to give you a snapshot of what we look like as a district with African-American staff. Let's keep going. You can see the SBACK performance of our African-American students. And you'll see the difference between males and females in terms of percent met or exceeded. And you can see significantly how African-American students are trailing other students in the district. So give you a moment to take that slide in. Let's go to our next slide. Sorry, the last slide was English Language Arts, and this slide is Mathematics. So, you know, we do perform overall better in English Language Arts than we do in Mathematics, and that's work we're continuing to stay focused on. And you'll see, we're really struggling here. Sadly, our Latino students are performing just a little bit better, but you can see that our African-American students are our lowest-performing subgroup here. Let's go to the next slide. Here you'll see the science test, the 1819 science test. We can go to our next slide. Here we have a few slides about our suspension rates that you can see. To move my screen there. You can see in the blue line, the African-American suspension rate, so it has trended higher than others. But you can also see that we've been able to decline that number in 1819. We don't obviously have our final stats for 1920, but the board's resolution around positive climate, the tremendous dedication and work of our school staffs, our teachers, administration, support staff, is really starting to help bring that number down. Let's go to our next slide. Here you'll see the African-American student graduation and A to G completion rate. The graduation rate is the blue, and you'll see that that has really ticked up over the past year. And we saw tremendous growth, almost 10% growth in the A to G rate, and that's dropped down a little bit as well. But overall, that has been a positive place for our work with our African-American students and really proud of the work our high schools are doing. Let's continue to go. And you'll see, this is the California dashboard, and you'll see the green, as I mentioned. The green is the graduation rate, and that's really the most positive trend in the district with college and career and suspension rates following behind where we've done a nice job. We continue to struggle in academic achievement, the SBACK scores, and chronic absenteeism. Our numbers aren't finished from this year. We've had a better year with absenteeism and attendance this year than we have had last. And this year, as many folks know, we didn't administer the SBACK exams, so we won't have that data. But that really, I think, paints a good picture, a disappointing picture, but I think the real picture of where we're at in the district. As most of you know, we've joined the Core Data Collaborative, which is another way that we're looking at our data. And instead of just looking at it simply from one year to the next, this data really helps show how we're moving students. And this also shows you the tremendous struggle that our district is having moving African-American students in their achievement. So you'll see that in these areas, elementary school, middle school, and high school. Let me move my screen for one minute. In English Language Arts on the left and Math on the right, you'll see that we've really struggled to move our students. So, you know, even though there are many of them are coming in low, we need to be able to move them and grow them. The place we're doing all right is high school high school math. So we've got an orange. It's not great, but it is better than the others. So we continue to see, you know, some stronger movement in our high schools than we're seeing in our middles and our elementaries. Let's go to our next slide. Another thing we wanted to point out was where African-American students are performing at or higher than the district average. And you'll see that in English Language Arts on the left with the district average of 35%. And in Math on the right with the district at 24%. And you can see the schools where students are doing better than average. And note, these are only the schools with 10 or more African-American test takers. So we don't have that in every school. And reminder that our, the SBACK is not given at every grade level, and in high school, only one grade level. Let's move to our next slide. Here you'll see the schools where the difference between the percentage of African-American and percentage of white students meeting standards is the largest. So that means that the percentage difference between the scores of African-American students and white students. So these schools have the widest gap, achievement gap, as we commonly know that term. Let's go to our next slide. So that's the data, and that's the story in terms of the data right now. We wanted to talk a little bit about the last five years and what's been happening. There are many things that were in existence before I arrived and many people working at this before I arrived. So 1516 was a year before I arrived and just making sure, you know, I'm honoring that and honoring all the work that's come before. So you'll see that in 1617, we started the initiative around the Kennedy family and the South Richmond schools, which is where our largest percentage of African-American students are. We started to develop new schools to give African-American parents and all parents options. The Mafanikio program began, and we continued with our trauma-informed practices. 1718, we continued to develop new models as parents asked us for those. We developed out our K8 models. We implemented our positive climate resolution. We added additional APs and VPs. We had all of our leaders go through workshops with the National Equity Partner, National Equity Project. We deepened our partnerships with organizations like Bright Futures and Rising Scholars. And we were awarded a million-dollar school climate grant to continue to allow us to do this work. And then we also began a sports league in the Kennedy family to enable many of our students who can't afford to pay for soccer and AAU and the sports to be able to do that. So let's go to our next slide. In 1819, we moved to the Youth Truth Survey to get better data from our students. They were the ones actually who initiated that and asked us, could we move away from healthy kids and try something new? We started to see the decline in African-American suspensions and the improvement in the A to G rates. We changed our transfer policy to allow students to stay in their new school until the final year. So if you transferred to a new school and you came in in third grade, there was no chance that in fourth grade you'd be asked to leave because there were new resident students who took your spot. The Asset Executive Committee was formed, and a great success was that all of our Kennedy elementary schools exited the red category on the dashboard. This year, to continue the work, the African-American Student Resolution was passed. We improved graduation rates. We fully adopted the PBIS system. We now are working with the Equal Opportunities Schools Organization to ensure that more students have access to honors and AP courses in our high schools. We were awarded $1.3 million from the Hewlett Grant to make sure that our deeper learning experiences happen for our students inside the classrooms. A Black Educator Network has started. We've expanded ethnic studies offerings, multicultural books for classroom libraries. We began a pilot at Stige, brought them out of CSI status, returned, having all teachers return except one, which is Buck, the trend that we've had there. And we opened the Office of African-American Student Achievement. So a lot of work has happened, and I really wanted to try to connect the dots so people could see everything that we've put in place as we work aggressively to make sure African-American students are supported. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the Kennedy Family Initiative. We're now in year three. Home to the largest population of African-American students, historically underserved schools with high teacher turnover. So this was also meant as a teacher retention strategy to focus on these schools. And this initiative consisted of a number of additional supports. Assistant principals in the schools, leadership coaching, a family sports league, a community of practice for teachers, and additional site dollars. Obviously, we're in budget tight times, but we continue to work to ensure as much of that initiative stays in place as possible. We've seen some very positive results from this initiative, and this was really one of the first things that I set out doing when I got here in partnership with the board, in partnership with the teachers' union, in partnership with the community to really help support these schools. Every Kennedy elementary school moved out of the red on the California dashboard. We increased teacher retention in the Kennedy schools, and the Elementary Schools League was so so well-attended that we've expanded it to all of the schools in Richmond. So I wanted to tell a success story. We've got a lot of work to do, but I wanted to tell a success story of Niestram Elementary School. Many folks ask, like, is it this program or is it that program? And I really believe Niestram is a place where all of it has been brought together successfully. We added the VP support. We gave leadership coaching. We have a strong African-American male leader leading the Mafanikio program and on campus. Philanthropy has kicked in, a full-time math coach. They worked through deeper learning practices, especially around math. And they've seen amazing results. This year, only seven students were suspended, two African-American. They've moved from 2% proficient to 15% proficient in three years for African-American students. Let's go to our next slide. You can see on the scatter plot where they are. And that is really, really, really impressive in terms of average growth. And on this, while African-American students are not the top achieving band, you can see how Niestram has started to significantly close the gap with the overall students. And here, African-American students outperform English learners. So Niestram is a real success story, and we continue to go there to study what's happening. But I believe it is the mix of all of these things coming together really well. But I believe it is the mix of all of these things coming together really well. Positive School Climate Training and Support. So I wanted to spend a few minutes talking about that. The board passed a positive school climate resolution, getting after the need to reduce disproportionality in discipline. And this year, we ensured that 95% of all of our schools completed our PBIS-tiered fidelity inventory so they could assess their school culture and climate and begin to move the work forward. We implemented a PLC for Tier One in PBIS focused on restorative practices. The PLCs use monthly reports to monitor African-American suspensions. We've partnered with the Santa Clara County Office of Education, which is a leader in PBIS technical assistance, and continued trauma-informed practices with a couple of new courses, Relationships Matter and Consequences and Interventions. We can go to the next slide. We dramatically increased our trauma-informed practices trainings to our CSOs. We've added experienced CSO and safety specialists to ensure the physical student safety. So we've really bumped up that infrastructure. We continue to implement the Sanford-Harmony SEL curriculum across the district. So that continues to grow, and hopefully, we have full implementation next year. We partnered with an organization called Seeds to explore implementing implicit bias training across the district for next year. And Seeds is supporting best practices around student reintegration as students come back from juvenile hall, back from expulsion, and back from suspension. And we have a district and county task force that actively meets and combs through our data to determine root causes of suspensions. And we'll be developing training and further support for the district staff. I really want to thank LaShante Smith and Millie Burns for their work here and their partnership here, as well as Phil Johnson, Mike Booker, and the rest of the team that's helping with positive school climate throughout the district. I want to talk a little bit about the Mafanikio Program. One of the programs that is a signature program of this district, a program that's paid through our past budget. It's an after-school program for African-American students. It features culturally relevant curriculum. It features access to the arts, including partnerships with the East Bay Center for Performing Arts, access to engaging STEM curriculum, including partnerships with the Calculus Roundtable. And the Calculus Roundtable is a wonderful organization led by a terrific African-American leader in our community. And what you'll see in the Mafanikio Program is leadership by talented and experienced African-American educators with the belief that our young African-American students really need to be connected and touched by African-American mentors and educators. And there's many, many field trips throughout the Bay Area. You'll see here some of the data on the Mafanikio Programs, a little bit of some of their subcontractors who they work with, and a little bit of the money that that costs. So I won't read all of those notes to you, but they're in your packet and here for you. Let's go on to the next slide. Wanted to talk a little bit about the UC Berkeley Trio Programs. So this is, these are, you know, a really, really deep, thorough set of programs that we have in partnership with Cal Berkeley. They're designed to increase college awareness, access, matriculation with UCB's Center for Education Partnerships. The biggest part of this program is the DCAC College Advisor Fellows at every comprehensive high school. So we have a college advisor at every comprehensive high school who's dedicated to supporting students, especially first-generation students, students whose families have not gone to college, to help them see and understand the path to and through college. We also partner with UC Berkeley and the Women in STEM Program, the African-American Male Pipeline Program. And they help us evaluate our A to G work. And we get a deeper understanding of which of our students are really struggling to meet A to G requirements and how we can support that. And they have another program called Talent Search. So our partnership with Berkeley is an amazing opportunity for us to continue to help African-American students and others. Bright Futures is another program that we pay for out of the past budget. It's an after-school enrichment support for African-American students at the El Sabrante location. And it includes early childhood education, family and parent engagement, homework support, social-emotional support, mentoring, performing arts, and youth summer employment. And we've been proud to partner with Bright Futures the last few years. You'll also see here some of the data and some of the outcomes, self-reported, the sites where the students come from, and the total cost. Excuse me. Rising Scholars, last week, we had an opportunity to hear from the Rising Scholars Program. Thomas Scott, who you see there in the picture, is one of our employees in the liaison to Rising Scholars. So you got a chance to hear a lot about that. But another program that's been historically paid for through the past program started specifically for African-American boys and opened up to more students of color over the past few years. And you'll see some of the bullets that outline really what Rising Scholars is doing across our six district high schools. Also here, another chart with some of the outcomes from Rising Scholars, cost, focus areas, and the sites served. Something we haven't talked about a lot, and I'm really excited to share this evening, is we're working with an organization called Equal Opportunity Schools. They work throughout the nation, working to ensure that representation is as equal as it can be in advanced placement classes. So there's a process that happens where Equal Opportunity Schools comes in. They work with our schools. They identify many, many, many talented students and really begin to discuss with them, hey, why are you not taking an AP class? We think you would be great in an AP class. And it works towards historically disadvantaged populations, students we're not often seeing in AP classes. We know our AP classes are mostly white and Asian. So this is directly targeted to African-American students, Latino students. And we've started this project at Pinole Valley High, El Cerrito High, and Hercules High, where we're seeing the greatest gaps between white and Asian students in AP classes and black and Latino students in AP classes. So they've gone through this process this entire year. And next year, we will see many more students who have not been historically represented in AP classes there. We will continue to pay for that through the Hewlett Foundation Grant. As part of that grant has a deep equity focus. Let's go on to our next slide. Another new program this year that kicked off for us a few weeks ago is NAV to Cal. Some of you may know that Cal Berkeley has a program called NAV Cal. And NAV Cal helps students, first-generation students, students who have not known the university system before, really understand Cal, everything it has to offer, all of sort of the cultural parts of being in higher education. And so we're very lucky that the Vice Chancellor of the Berkeley's Division of Equity and Inclusion, who's a WCCUSD grad, has kicked off a new program just for WCCUSD called NAV to Cal, where we are working specifically to recruit high-achieving African-American and Latino students to be enrolled at UC Berkeley. So we had about 80 students on our first call two weeks ago. And we're really excited about this program and what it can bring to our students. Our budget, we have paid for some of the programs that I've talked about out of different pots of money. And some of them have come directly from the past budget, which is our programs for African-American student success. That budget is now a committed budget of $7 million per board resolution in January. We obviously are going through major, major state budget issues. So that really moves to about $6.2 to $6.8 million, same ratio. And as of writing this, we've committed $5.6 million to the past budget for next year. While we're continuing to work to get all of that from our supplemental concentration budget with this serious, serious budget issue in the state and some of the budget issues we faced in the district, we will pull from some different funds to get there. And we know that we will get to the 6.2 to 6.8 while we continue to get to the supplemental concentration funds over time. Now our next steps are work with asset leaders, community staff, to determine the right expenditures going forward. And because we are in the pandemic, we really may determine that there's certain expenditures, certain things that we need that are very different if we're in a virtual environment or we're back in a school environment. So we've got some work to do over the coming six weeks to really determine those expenditures going forward. So what's next for us? I want to start by saying the core classroom experience must change for the majority of African-American students. That's where we find that the struggles really emanate from. And that's where I'm excited to continue the work to improve this experience, whether we're in the digital or physical, the work we're doing around deeper learning, the work we're doing around workshop, the work we continue to do around our district to ensure the classroom experience is engaging, empowering, challenging, the work we've laid out in our roadmap. Also next is hiring the new Director of African-American Student Achievement. We have an item on the agenda this evening to look at the job description, a few minor changes suggested from our asset team, and that position will be posted tomorrow morning. We also need to define the one-year and multi-year goals of the Office of African-American Student Achievement. This includes academic achievement and representation in advanced classes where offered. So we know that one person coming in as a Director of African-American Student Achievement can't do it all. We've got to create a simple scope of work that's attainable and inspiring that really helps us say, we believe these are the things in year one, year two, year three, so that director in conjunction with staff and community can be very successful. As I mentioned in the last slide, we've got to determine the expenditures and programs to be funded by the past budget. The primary focus area for this work is academic, academic tutoring services, and mental health supports. These are the things we've heard loud and clear over time that we want to make sure the academic intervention, the academic tutoring is there, and the mental health support is there. And especially in the pandemic time, we're seeing more and more need for mental health supports across all of our students. We need to ensure that asset and the African-American parent community continues as a strong partner to the district in district decision-making, including the past budget. Go to our next slide. We need to ensure that school-based APACs are empowered and active in the 2021 school year. We know we've had some years where we've done very well with that and other years not as strong. And we want to make sure that every school has a place for African-American parents to come and discuss their experiences with other parents and with school leadership. We've got to determine the all-district, all-staff training needed for next school year to increase cultural awareness. So we have to make sure that over the next couple of weeks, we solidify what we're offering to everybody when they come back around implicit bias, growth mindset, trauma-informed practices. So we are as culturally aware, culturally sensitive, smart, and reflective as we possibly can be. That's not work that just happens in a one-and-done training. It's work that's going to have to happen all year. We've done a lot of that, and we're going to continue to step it up. We need to ensure that our African-American staff get proper, timely, and support where needed. We've got to examine schools with few or no African-American staff. Places that we're seeing strong African-American progress, like Niestram, like DeAnza, we are seeing a good amount of African-American staff, not just teachers, but staff. Kids are seeing themselves in many of the wonderful staff members that are around. And I think we can probably show an even deeper data connection. We just talked about teachers tonight, but the wider staff. So that's a piece of work for us. We need to explore partnerships that were initiated by the previous Director of African-American Student Achievement, like One Goal and Kingmakers, and see who else is out there that wants to partner with us to help. Another big ask has been that we ensure that contracted vendors meet set objectives before renewal and that we establish clear AMOs for new work. So we are updating our processes, and that is in progress. Dr. Wald, Martine Blake are working together to make sure those processes are as solid as can be and continue to get strengthened every year. But I do want to call that out. That is something that we've heard loud and clear, and I want to note it, that we're committed to making that work. We need to restart the Positive Climate Working Group. That had a, that's had a bit of, some fits and starts in the last year between budget, COVID, to get that working group up and going. We're doing a lot of good work in that area, and it's been a real highlight for the district. But we want to make sure that that continues. And we want to systematize ethnic studies courses and expectations for all of our high schools. So while the ethnic studies courses are growing across our district, Black Studies courses, Chicano Studies, we need to make a determination of how we're going to systematize that. If there's going to be an expectation for all ninth graders, what is that going to look like as an entire district process while our schools are doing great to continue the course offerings? I think that's my last slide. So I know that's a lot, and I don't usually talk a lot. But I really wanted folks to see the breadth of the work that's going on. And I think the breadth of the work is going on because we know we have a lot of work to do. We know we have a lot of outcomes to increase. And there's many people across the board getting after it. So my commitment is to continue to get after it with our team, with our staff. I've really enjoyed the partnership with ASAT over the last couple of months, getting to know them more deeply and their leadership group. And again, you know, I thank a lot of the staff for so many things that are going on. And we've got big decisions to make because of COVID and what we will resource and what we won't. So I know there's a lot there. I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to listen to this work. And obviously, this is a big team effort. So with that, I'll stop. I know there's a little bit of public comment. I know that there is board discussion, and we can take it from there. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy. And we do have some public comments now. Mr. Walton?
Yes, President Hernandez-Dalvers. The first speaker is Christine Hatcher.
Thank you.
Ms. Hatcher?
Good evening. Thank you. I wanted to, a couple of things. Like first, I'd kind of let my ego jump in the way. Riverside had four African-American teachers, not one. And I understand that sometimes the details get away from us. But I wanted to make a comment on, when we look at certain schools and opportunities that they're afforded that other schools may not have. And so this is not to take away anything from the good work that is happening at Niestram. We celebrate that. Anytime African-American kids, brown kids are successful, that's a win. But I would offer the following. At Riverside Elementary School, helmed by a black woman myself, without the opportunities and support that Niestram has, I think that the progress that we have been making also is significant. And I haven't had opportunity to talk to anyone about that. And I'm sure that I have several colleagues within West Contra Costa Unified who have experienced that same thing. So while I appreciate, again, the work, and I appreciate that we are taking steps toward eradicating these gaps of opportunity that exist for all of our kids in the district, I would ask that we also be a little more inclusive and really look to the leaders that we do have, African-American leaders, and include us in the discussion around what needs to happen for African-American kids in this district. If we are truly going to be disrupting- If we are truly going to be disrupting the systems and structures of inequity and marginalization and really get into what makes a diverse and successful working group and district. So thank you.
Thank you.
The next public speaker is Estella DePaus.
Good evening, President Hernandez-Dalvers, board members and staff. My name is Estella DePaus. I'm from Hercules, and I'm also the school site council chair for Hercules High School. Before I call out a concern, I'd like to make sure to share with you guys that our principal, Ms. Moses, over at Aloney, asked that I correct a couple of data elements on the PowerPoint deck. And that is that in Aloney, we've got 101 African-American students, making that 22% of our student body, and one African-American teacher. Superintendent Duffy, on Slide 14, you highlighted several Hercules schools, and we are really, really happy and proud of that. And as you have said, moving the achievement gap requires a tremendous amount of commitment and hard work from everyone in our community. It really takes a village to educate a child. In Hercules, that includes the role of our SROs, who have been our first responders for when one of our young folks is in crisis or making bad decisions. That said, our community currently has got a lot of conversations happening about what we would do now. What is our plan? That the SRO program has been refunded, are we expecting our administrators and teachers to act as first responders? We really need to know what the plan is, and we'd like to know before our schools are open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board of trustees. If anything, this presentation has really highlighted the need to me for having access to the data. Parents have asked for this, and it's really important because you can very easily present a picture that really isn't reflective of the reality. So talking about growth does not really highlight the status. It's a way to manipulate with numbers, which is a big problem because still, in the two areas that our superintendent tonight has highlighted as showing tremendous growth in climate and in graduation rates, African-American students are still suspended three times higher than any other group. So while you may, it seems like there's been growth, we still aren't successful there. We're talking about graduation rates increasing, but at the same time, only 30% of our seniors are graduating with enough credits to be able to attend a four-year school. All of us have heard of those students who just keep getting passed on. And this, again, feels like the way that what we're doing is we're just passing kids on who really aren't prepared to do anything after they finish high school. So this, the access to these numbers and the perceptions that we provide with that is a real key and an important piece of the picture here. Because still, we don't have the, because it's about academics. It's about the academics. It's about the academics. And I thank you, Mr. Duffy, for saying that you have heard that now. And hopefully, as we move forward, and we're trusting in that and are grateful for the opportunities that we have had to sit with you and talk about this, that next steps will really stress that and that the plan that we come up with is comprehensive in scope and not scattered as this continues to look to us. So we're hopeful. We're in it. We're not going away, and we're committed to making sure that our students achieve and that they are granted access to successful programming and services that really raises the bar and raises the potentiality that we know is in every single one of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maisha Gash.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So good evening. I am Maisha Harris Gash. I am a teacher at Kennedy High School. I am a graduate of Kennedy High School as well. One, when is this district going to give Kennedy a chance to really thrive? I had Mr. Greenwood as a principal. I had Mr. Jean as a principal, and right now, my heart is hurting because Coach Enos has gone to be with the Lord. He was pivotal to my years in school. Now, I work with some really great people at Kennedy. What Kennedy has been lacking is consistent, sustained leadership from the principal to the admin staff. Because Kennedy is a difficult place to be, and granted, some of you have been on the board or not been on the board in the past 15 years that I've been in this district. But when is the time going to come when this district, when this board, when the leadership says, we are going to make a strong concerted effort to pour into and to empower and to support Kennedy High School? I pray that that time is now because I love my school. I love Richmond. I love my community, and I love my kids, and they deserve better than what they have been given over the years that I have been in this district. It's great that we're going to start building partnerships, but Kingmakers of Oakland has been around for a little bit of time. When I looked into some things, why hadn't we reached out? They have proof in what they're doing. Hiring black teachers in this district so kids can see teachers that look like them. It is not the easiest thing to do, but as a member of the bargaining team some years ago, I always had conversations with the leadership of the district about it's more than going to an HBCU. You have to build relationships with people. You have to tell people the truth about why you want them to come and what they're going to be walking into, and not that we just want warm bodies. I think my closing part is, I was so hurt after waiting so long for Omar Wanda, well, that position to be created and then for him to leave. Granted, it was something about relational trust. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but it was very hurtful because he was building relationships among, you know, staff, and we were going to be going to trainings and whatnot, and now we have to start over. We're behind the eight ball when it comes to our black children because the person who was in this position, that waited, we waited so long for it, is now gone, and we're starting all over. So in closing, I just pray, and I mean, I'm sincere. I pray that you guys, ladies and gentlemen, put Kennedy at the top. Quit treating us like we're the stepchild of this district because my kids, our kids deserve better. Thank you for this period of time.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jamila Foltz.
Hi. My name is Jamila Smith, and I'm Jamila Smith Foltz, and I understand the vastness of the district. I am a teacher, and I believe there needs to be a clear theory of action as it pertains to African-American students. What are the districts deliverables to students? What are they deliverables to parents? And what are they deliverables to the teachers and the staffs? Thank you for your time. I look forward to hearing your responses.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zulon Harrison. Ms. Harrison?
Hello. Good evening. My concern is that that was a lovely presentation. It looked beautiful. However, what is the board going to do to ensure this happens? A lot of things sounded good, but just ensuring that we really have the data from programs. You guys said the board put in place for evaluation tool, for programs to get looked at, to make sure that they were adequate to address educational outcomes. That hasn't been happening. So can we, black parents, know that you guys are going to make sure that these programs that we're funding work? I brought peacemakers to you when I first came, and there are programs and service providers in our community besides the ones you have, the superintendent has identified, that we need to bring in too, because the children can have mentors and leaders and others that look like them, that they can also feel safe in learning education, besides the ones that you have pointed out. But all our programs need to ensure that we have the outcomes we're looking for in changing education for black students in our district, that they're reading, that they're graduating, and being able to be productive citizens, not just getting out of the school and checking your back. And also, I just wanted to make sure that we involve parents to the point where we need the district, as far as the education, we need the board and the community all to make this work, but leaving someone off the table because you could, it always causes chaos because you're able to create division in black people and black students and black educators and community partners don't need division. So getting the most representative you can at the table, I think, is the best way to go when you're looking at best practice for people and trying to make a change for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is William McGee. Mr. McGee?
Thank you. Good evening, board, superintendent, staff, and community. My name is William McGee, principal at Dejounte Middle School, and I appreciate the presentation tonight. Thank you for having it. A couple of things did resonate with me and some colleagues who have been in communication, but glaringly are the hiring practices. And so really looking at supporting with hiring practices and human resources, and not only with hiring, but the sustaining and support once you do hire employees is very crucial and critical. One of the things that I would like to state is give testimony about Dejounte Middle School. It's a school that has improved tremendously, and we're continually trying to improve, but it is tough when we have ideas that we don't get the full support for. And so something that I'm referring to is, we just lost one of our assistant principals who was very effective because of monies and hiring practices. And when you have people that want to work at a school like Dejounte Middle School, want to work at a school like Kennedy, Coronado, King, Richmond High School, and we cannot get them back in, that's tough. And I have lost an assistant principal who ensured that we only missed 23 of our 460 children during distance learning. And we had a high percentage of black children participate in distance learning, and this man made it a point for him to really track down the children with the help of teachers and classified staff. So this speaks volumes to avoid that will be missed at our school site, who also started a peer court to reduce suspensions and hold children accountable. I am excited that I do hear Mr. Duffy stating he is going to work with us because West Contra Costa Ministers Association has a lot of good ideas that, if we work in tandem, can be implemented to sustain people working at our schools. And again, I'll talk about Dejounte, one of the toughest middle schools that has the highest unduplicated percentage of pupils, and what I have a plan for to do with our money, but am not allowed to. There are positions identified in the DL cap that do not work for our school. And so we do need to have you all reach out to the sites, really poll us. We're there day to day. We know what can work well for our community. Give us that opportunity that's been afforded to other schools that we're stating have improved. I really do feel that if we work with the sites, we can really make the growth that we want. And when we do get the new director, it'll be paramount to allow that person, the autonomy to do the work and really assist us in what we need to do. So again, I would say, please look at policies and procedures and really work with the sites because, again, there is money that we can use as resources that we know can help our students achieve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Othree Christian. Mr. Christian?
Hello. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, board. My name is Othree Christian, and, you know, based on hearing the presentation this evening, just looking at the overall picture of the African-Americans in this district, if we don't do the right things to make it, to build the education from elementary, that's our crucial point. If the resources are not going into all of these schools to service the African-American students, to help them to go to the next level, we have to ask the question, what have we done? Why have we failed? And why have we allowed these things to be like this over the years? So my question is, what are we going to do about it? We just can't talk about it. You know, a lot of times, we do a lot of talking, but we don't put the action to the road to make it happen. So, and true people will, true leaders will make it happen. And so you're looking at how many African-American teachers we have? What are we doing to reach out, to recruit male and female teachers? What are we doing to improve the status of the status in the district of African-American young people? So what I'm saying is, tonight, is that we got to show action. Even despite we in the major budget crisis, even despite we in all of this, we still can do some things to make some things happen. Because I've been around to know, as a community activist in Richmond for a very long time. I'm from Richmond, and I understand what's going on in the dynamics of things, why things the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final public comment comes from Martine Blake. Ms. Blake?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to raise a quick point in regards to next steps and advocate that we also insert some structure or something for our students to lend student voice to this plan, for them to contribute input. You know, I've learned a lot from parents and APAC, and I think we've gotten incredible insight from them, an incredible perspective from our parents. Our parents have even adopted a motto, "Nothing for us, without us." And I think that that same sentiment extends to our students and that we're missing an opportunity by not embedding their voice in this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Walton, and thank you to all the members of our community who shared their public comment with us this evening. Student trustee Vasquez Simula is absent from the meeting today, so trustee Cuevas.
Actually, I'm here.
Oh, trustee, trustee Vasquez Simula, welcome. I have not, I have not seen you. Yay!
I didn't know about this meeting until now, so I'm going, but I'm here now, so...
Oh, no. Well, thank you so much for being here. So great to see you. Okay, so if you're ready to get started with comment, you can for sure start, and then we'll continue with a rotation of trustee Cuevas, trustee Phillips, Panas, and Lada. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Quickly, I just want to let you guys know that I am indeed on my bed, so I'm sorry that I'm looking so informal. It's the only place I could get really good lighting. And again, sorry that I am late, but this is, yeah, I'm really, I'm really excited to be here and able to talk on this. And so I think, first place I would like to start, Mr. Duffy, when I looked at the ASBAC in the last five years, it actually looks like the African-American community is doing a little worse each year. Albert Einstein said that the definition of stupidity is doing the same thing, same thing over and over and expecting a different response or answer, right? So I'm wondering, what about this year? What about the information you just gave us now is going to be any different than it has been in the past? What is, what, how is this new information, this new hope, or like, how is it going to be any different? I just want to know that. I'm, I'm actually really frustrated right now. Like, we're in 2020, and we're still having these conversations. I think we should have had a decent answer a long time ago. It's just frustrating to me. This whole topic is really frustrating to me, honestly. I think one thing, yeah, so what it seems to me right now is that nothing we're doing right now is helping or working. So why are we doing the same thing over and over again? What I think we need to do is we need to come from a new place, new stance, new everything, just try a completely new way of doing it. And I think one way we could do this is by trusting in our young African-Americans to take lead for other African-Americans. I think if I was given, like, some time and some resources, I myself could even help with this, but nobody is asking for other educated... But nobody is asking for other educated African Americans to help educate other African Americans. I think, because I mean, let's be honest, after the young African Americans, it seems to me kind of like personally that it's harder for them to listen to a white teacher or to someone with white authority, right? Then it could be to like another black student or a black teacher. So I think one thing that we could be doing is giving, is like, yeah, is having other students try and help. One way we could do this, for an example, would be through black student unions. I think, I go to LSU to high school and the black student union there so far isn't as strong as I would like it to be. I'm hoping for some big changes this coming year. But still, I think if we were to focus on those kids or like focused on giving the power to other young African Americans to help push each other, what could possibly like, what can you do, like, what could be better than young African Americans helping push each other on? I'd like, obviously, right now, having a bunch of white teachers is not helping. Having all these advanced classes with mostly white kids is not helping. So we need to do something different. And I think the presentation, Mr. Duffy, was pretty good, but I think there was nothing new. And that's what I want to see. And if you, so if you want to follow up with me afterwards and talk to me about this, I would definitely be down. I know that I'm not the only African American student who would be down for this as well. We need to reach out to other young African Americans because I bet you every African American right now that is doing pretty well, none of them are going to say no to helping other African Americans succeed as well. We want to all see each other do better. I don't know. I'm sorry that I'm all fired up, but this really means a lot to me. And I just think that like, we should know to be doing something different by now and that nothing is helping. So we should be completely coming at it from a new direction. And I think the first place to start is with our students, asking our students to help the other students. That's, that's, that's kind of the reason that I'm here and that I'm doing, that I'm on this board as representative and why I do all the other activism that I do is to help my other fellow African, is to help everybody, but especially the young African Americans, because I see how they are struggling. And it's not that they're not capable of learning or that they are stupid. It's because they are not giving the right kind of help. So think, if we had the right kind of help for these students, how much better everything could be? Like, I think it doesn't have to take a bunch of money or like a bunch of resources or a bunch of this or that to really fix it, but it needs to be the right way that we're coming at it. So I could go on, but I think I'm going to stop right there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, trustee Vasquez Simula. Thank you so much. Trustee, and definitely, you know, I think that we need to continue to hear the student perspective, specifically from high school and middle school. I think that this is something that, that is an ongoing message that we're hearing loud and clear. So thank you for reiterating that. And I can't find my list. Let me find my list, but trustee, trustee Cuevas is next, I believe. Yes, trustee Cuevas. Thank you.
So I'm going to be pretty brief. But I will say that I don't, I don't think our student trustee should ever apologize for feeling something deep within your spirit and your soul about how your reaction. I think it's definitely the challenge we have is how do we actually take our intentions and make them real? And I do think that it is something, after five years, I've come to the conclusion that it really is about how do we activate everything? And it is about really the kinds of decisions that we're willing to make. And there's one that I don't think we talk about enough, and that is what are we willing to sacrifice? What are individual parts of this district, what are individual parts of our system willing to sacrifice to invest in our students that need it most? Let me give you an example of what might be coming up in terms of decision making. Our community was generous enough just to pass a new school bond, facilities bond measure, measure R. Just the way it happened for decisions that were made previously. And I've always believed high schools are in fact the flagships of every one of our communities and our school families. We've had every school significantly refurbished and re, re, reconstructed with the exception of Kennedy High School and Richmond High School. So we will again have a conversation about facilities master plan. And the question will come up, will we make the decision to prioritize those schools? Or will, will we not? And I guarantee you that it, I won't hear everybody unanimously saying, yes, do that. But I certainly know that that's a symbolic indication of whether we support our highest needs students at this moment. And so that's where the rubber here hits the road, because I spent a lot of time hearing about what works and I've really started to really understand and kind of come to really deconstruct why things don't happen. And at the end of the day, I've constantly talked about, it is about investing more. And folks might disagree and that's okay, because that's what our country is about, about different perspectives. But the clear choices we make is usually because it's framed as a zero sum game. If I invest in our highest needs students here, that must mean somebody else is going to think I'm not getting what I need. And we hear those dynamics played out in the district. So I do think that part of the issue is going to be where the will is to actually, everybody think about what are we willing to do for each other to get things done? But I don't question in terms of where the shortcomings are. The data, we talked about the data, we've known about it. And we will always find reasons why we don't hit the target. Oh, we changed the tests in the last five years. Oh, we've changed curriculum. Oh, we're, we don't have enough money. There are all of these reasons why, but at the end of the day, nobody's asking, what are we willing to sacrifice and prioritize with the money we have? And what does that mean when it, other folks will feel, and rightly so, will, will want to know, well, why not me? And the bottom line is, we're going to have to say, because this is our priority and our investment if we're going to further outcomes, equity outcomes for all students. And I don't think this district has been ready to have that conversation ever in the last five, 10 years. We have good intention, but we haven't talked about how are we willing to restructure in ways that mean even different staffing patterns at our schools, looking at what the specific needs are at our, our specific schools. The way we run education now is really by formula. So many, because there's also some interest in doing that, because that's what we thought would maintain equality. So I, I do think that you're, that our, everybody's comments are, are well taken. And I would just add for the conversation and our discourse that until, until we start talking about what we're willing to sacrifice and what folks are willing to give up for the sake of furthering, then we're going to keep, keep coming back to the same place. Sadly, I know I've talked to some leaders within the community and this is the same conversation that they had with their children when they were going through our schools, the same conversation they had with their parents when they were younger. And that's the, the thing, the question is, for our student trustee, how, how can you help inspire us so that you're not sitting here 25 years from now with the same gray hair that I have and still having the same conversation? But maybe it's time to start asking, what are we willing to give instead of, of what I'm not getting? And that's from everybody. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, trustee Cuevas. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you very much. I'm going to be looking away from the screen that everybody's on because I'm working off of two computers and I'm keeping notes on one. And so I'm going to go over these notes. So what I want to do is I want to start by identifying a couple of issues. We all know that there are myriad problems, but I want to start by identifying a couple of issues. One is anecdotal and one is from the presentation itself. So I'll start with the anecdotal one. Since we've been out of school, I have had several African American families come to me and tell me that their children are doing better outside of the classroom. That their children are blossoming, that their children are blooming, and that they see a huge difference. And when I say outside of the classroom, I mean outside of the schoolhouse. And the concern that these parents have brought to me is if he's able to do this, or if she's able to do this, what was going on before that caused a problem? What was the hindrance before? Because my child is clearly capable. And I think we have a fundamental problem when we have parents. And I don't know if anyone has shared anything like this with any of you, but we have a fundamental problem when we have parents coming to school board members and saying, and I get it, distance learning is not for everyone, and we have access issues as well around the internet and connectivity. But when we have parents coming and saying, you know what? My kid's not in that room anymore and he is doing better? We should be concerned about that. We should be concerned that there are parents who, and I'm talking about African American parents right now, who don't want to send their kids back because they believe that the environment that their children came out of was actually a negative environment for their children. And being, and being outside of traditional school, that their children are actually doing better. There's a fundamental breakdown in that, and it needs to be examined because it should be the opposite. It should be, kids are not in school because of COVID and therefore there's learning loss. Kids are not in school because of COVID, therefore they're doing worse. But with some families, we're seeing the opposite. And the kids didn't get any smarter over the last two months. Their aptitude didn't go up over the last two months. For some of them, the difference is that they're in a supportive, nurturing and positive environment. And that's not always the case. It is the case in some spaces, but in some spaces, frankly, in a lot of spaces, it's not. And so that's, that's the problem that I want to identify that's anecdotal. The problem that I want to identify from the presentation is that graduation rates are going up. And someone may say, well, mister, how in the world is it a problem that graduation rates are, rates are going up? The problem is, and Ms. Vera Allen, I think, called in and said something similar to this or alluded to this. But the problem is that the graduation rates are growing up, going up, but the kids' scores are not going up. So what we're doing is we're graduating more children who are not college or career ready. And that has been a problem in urban school districts forever. The problem of passing the child along and not giving him or her what they actually need to be successful once they get outside of, of our doors. So great kudos on the graduation going up, but what happens to children when they graduate and they're not college or career ready? And I say college or career because we have children who have different interests, who have different likes, who have different needs and aptitudes. And they should be able to springboard from this space, this K-12 space to college or career, and they're not able to do that. Next, after I've identified just those two problems, because I think they summarize a lot, I want to talk about what has been done. So, Mr. Duffy, if you want to answer these questions, I know I don't have forever. I'm going to go through some of this and you could reply when you want. But when I heard the presentation, I saw a lot of legacy programs. Matter of fact, almost everything that I saw was a legacy program. So the current administration has been in place for about four years. And the question is, what has actually been done? Four years ago, we knew we had a problem with our African American students around their achievement for various reasons. And we've had presentations over that period of time where we reiterate that there's a problem and what has actually been done. When I look at the presentation, I see a repeat of legacy programs. And then I see things like the Kennedy Family Initiative. Well, this presentation is about African American student achievement. Kennedy Family Initiative is not an initiative targeted for African American students. Not saying it's a bad initiative, but it is not designed to alleviate the issues academically that African American students are having. I heard, you know, VPs were VPs in the presentation. Everybody knows I love VPs. I've advocated for more VPs, but those VPs are not targeted interventions for African American students. Again, this is a presentation on African American students. I heard we have given the CSOs more training. I don't know what in the world that has to do with African American students. I've heard, you know, we're increasing, you know, mental health, trauma services. Again, that's not a targeted intervention for African American students. And while I'm on the mental health and trauma, I just want to take a moment and say, true, it, it, it is true that trauma is an issue in the African American, American community. But it's also true that trauma isn't new. We were traumatized on our way to America and we've been traumatized ever since we set foot on America. And this school district is not going to, and even if it wanted to, doesn't have the capability to erase or the resources to erase all of the trauma that African American students have experienced. And quite frankly, unless something seriously changes in America, will continue to, to experience as a people. And the reason that I'm bringing this up, because trauma for me, while it's real, I, I almost feel like it's becoming a buzzword, that you just kind of throw out, trauma, 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 trauma. And I think what that does is it gives people some excuses. Because these kids are so traumatized, we can't teach them. These kids are so traumatized, they can't learn. And until we fix these broken kids, hey, we're off the hook because they're broken. They are mentally defective. And so we're just going to talk about trauma, 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 because it makes us feel good. But also what it does is it takes the onus away from us doing our job. Black people have been traumatized since we've been black people here. And I don't mean that, you know, to be flippant. I mean it because it's the truth. It's the truth. And so as long as we stay on this, and again, I'm not saying that trauma is not real, but our primary goal is to teach these kids so they can get out of our district and take care of themselves. Because what is happening now is we're graduating kids who can't go get good, decent paying jobs and get healthcare for themselves. I will tell you this, if I had a choice between spending money on, had equal money and I had a choice between spending money on making sure that these kids left our district academically sound and prepare, or making sure that these kids left this district with their social or emotional issues resolved, I'm going to tell you which one I'd pick. I'd pick academic. And I'd pick academic because I want, because I want them to leave here and be able to go get a good job and take care of themselves and take care of their families. Because guess what? When you can't do that, that creates a whole nother level of trauma. Because now you're out there struggling and now you're out there hustling, trying to figure out how to take care of your family because you were not given the skills in school that you were supposed to. But you were given all of these other services. I'd rather have a child be able to get a job with good healthcare and pay for his own or her own mental health insurance and be able to take care of his or her family. That's my opinion. I know some people may be upset about what I just said, but I believe that we're supposed to be sending kids out of here ready for college and career, and we're not doing that. I heard the Office, Office of African American Student Achievement, that is a, a target, targeted inter- that is a targeted intervention, but it's not really accurate that we actually have an office. We have a, we had a director. We're going to hire a director, but that is a one-man band. I don't consider that an office. So I think we should just speak of it the way it is. It's true that the Black Educators Network is being created or has been created. But that has nothing to do with the central office. That's because some black parents and black educators decided, you know, we need to band together and do some self-help. And I'm very glad that they did that. But the question is, what has the administration done since it's been here to actually address these issues? I heard about one goal, for example. And I'm just going to tell you, because this is the first opportunity that I've gotten a chance to say something about it. Personally, I am opposed to creating at Deans High School or any other high school a class that just has black children. Because this is, although, you know, if kids decide when they leave here that they want to go to an HBCU, I support that. But that's not what this space is. This is a high school. This is an integrated high school. And I believe that they should be able to attend classes and that they should attend classes with children of other races. So I don't support that idea. I want to talk a little bit about some of the solutions that have come up and that I've heard and some of the things that I think that I've said in the past. I know Trustee Laura has talked about ethnic studies. I've talked about it as well. I think we should actually have a department of ethnic studies, not this kind of ad hoc, one-off thing that we kind of have. And if we're going to actually talk about how do we level up or scale up and do it in a coordinated way, I think it should be a department of ethnic studies. President Hernandez Jarvis has talked on multiple occasions about an Office of Equity. Because we keep having these equity conversations as a board, but there is no one really driving that work. And she has said this, this is her idea. So I do like to give credit where credit is due, and it's a conversation that we should have. When we look at the scores that these children have, and it's not just about scores, but the scores do mean something. And it means something regarding their ability to do work. Work that is very critical and that will actually have an impact on what they're able to do successfully in the future. We need to do, in my humble opinion, these children need rapid remediation. Right now, we're talking about African American students. But the truth of the matter is, I'm going to bring everybody else in for a minute. The overwhelming majority of our school district, the kids in our district, need rapid remediation. And I get it. How do you do that? I've been talking about Let's Go Learn for a long time. I really believe that we are doing ourselves a disservice by not at least hearing a presentation from them to see what they can do. We had a meeting last week where we talked about diagnostics and assessments and all of the things that we need to do in the COVID environment. That program does all of that, and it's able to do rapid remediation. And if people don't like it, or I think more highly of it than I should, people can just say, no, we don't want to do it. We looked at the presentation, we don't want to do it. But the idea of not having a presentation around a program that could really help these kids, I don't think that's right. I heard PD as a solution. But the truth of the matter is, our teachers, our staff are not actually required to do PD. So, and this is bigger than just this single incident that we're talking about. But if we're really saying, you know, we want all of our people to have implicit bias training, or we want all of our people to have any kind of training, for that matter, that means PD has to be mandatory. Because if it's not, we're always going to have these starts and fits. It's always going to be hit and miss. And we need to move to a space where PD is mandatory. And I understand because of the contract, that means that there needs to be a talk with the bargaining units around what, how do we do that? But we need to have that discussion because we're not, we're talking about training people, and then we put on a PD and tell them they don't have to come if they don't want to. So it's just, it's a lot of talk. I heard more support for African American staff. But in this one call, I've heard Principal Moses call in. I've heard Principal Hatchet call in. I've heard Principal McGee call in. All African American principals. And it is very clear that nobody reached out to them before this presentation happened. So again, if we're going to collaborate, what does that actually look like? Well, at a minimum, it means actually reaching out to folks and listening. And we have some people in this district. And what I'm about to say applies really across the board. We have some people in this district who are very strong in what they do, very talented, who know their stuff. And what we need to do, in my opinion, is sometimes when we, not sometimes, every time when we see somebody like that, we need to reach down, and you can't see my hands, but I'm literally reaching down. We need to reach down into the organization and pull people up who are ready and able, who are here already to be able to do that work. And we have some folks, so we're going to collaborate. Let's collaborate. But I'm going to tell you what I've heard ultimately in this presentation is I've heard work that's already been going on, so it's not new. I've heard work that other people have created or started just because it's important to them, and it hasn't come out of the central office. I have not heard a plan, a concrete plan to address these students and their needs. And I'm going to, I'm going to say this, you know, however rude or whatnot it may be, but if it's true, it's true. Our student board member, you know, he said, you know, in the last, I think he said, four or five years, he said every year African American student achievement gets worse. And, you know, and I'm just going to, I'm going to put this in your lap, Mr. Duffy, and ask you, because that's how long you've been here. And so we could talk about plans, and we could talk about how, you know, the last couple of months, it's been good to, you know, talk to the ASAP people. But at what point are we going to change things? These children, but is it accurate? Is it true that every year since the superintendent's been here, African American student achievement has gotten worse? And I'm done, but, you know, we're going to change something, then let's actually change something and stop talking. Because people are tired of talking.
Thank you very much, President Hernandez Jarvis. I'd like to thank the public and Trustee Vasco Simula for sharing their thoughts tonight. It's a message that we need to hear and keep hearing. I completely agree with Trustee Cuevas that this work is not a zero-sum game. I don't know what the name is for the opposite of a zero-sum game, but I firmly believe in that opposite perspective. I've been an active advocate for culturally relevant curriculum. And I have literally noticed the power of this in the last couple of weeks, last couple of months, actually. Our Trustee Vasco Simula has been on fire in a very positive way. And that's because he is currently exploring an amazing curriculum called Social Change. And he is learning math. He is learning English. He is learning communications. He is learning a ton of stuff. The guy is on fire right now because in my mind, he's looking at culturally relevant curriculum. So, interesting. I have a few questions specifically about the presentation. When I look on Slide 15, it talks about S-Back Performance, and it talks about the greatest difference between African American and white students meeting the standards is all schools that are in the El Cerrito family. And Mr. Duffy, I'm just wondering if you have any particular perspective to share on that, that's on the ELA side, not on the math side? Mr. Duffy, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I don't have the slide in front of me. Can you say that one more time?
Okay, so it's Slide number 15, 2018, 19, S-Back Performance. And schools where the difference between the percent of African American and percent of white students meeting standards is the largest. Fifty percent or higher. And all those schools are in the El Cerrito family. And I'm just wondering what perspective you have to share on that?
Well, I think, you know, we have pockets of high wealth in the district. I think you see in the El Cerrito family, you know, pockets of high wealth, and there's some of the highest performers within the district. So you'd also expect to see higher performance of African American students. So I don't have the socioeconomic status in front of me, but we also know that at times, even our high-income African American students are not performing as well as our high-income white students. And I think that's part of what we're seeing in the El Cerrito corridor as well as just seeing very high scores in general. So it really stands out that we have this issue in El Cerrito specifically that we have to continue to tackle.
Okay, thank you. On Slides 25 through 33 of the presentation, we've described a number of different programs. And I'm wondering, right now, do we have a master plan that is driving those? Or is that part of what, on Slide 35, the third bullet says, define the one-year and multi-year goals of the Office of African American Student Achievement? Would they be like creating complaints? I don't, I don't have a feeling, and I could be wrong. Like, we don't have a master plan with milestones and people responsible for outcomes driving the work we're doing to try and support African American achievement right now. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
We do not. The goal was to have that built out through the Director of African American Student Achievement begin to start that work so we could clearly define exactly as you said, what do we want to see in one year, three year, five year? And I think that is not just, you know, proficiency percentages, but it is, you know, radically increased numbers of students in AP classes, radically increased numbers of students in advanced music classes, all of the things where we're seeing absolute underrepresentation in our district. Those are the places that we need to get after and call out. These are our goals for one, three, five years, but we have to do that mutually.
Okay, thank you. On Slide 34, the first paragraph talks about would state reductions our target? For the African American Student Success Budget is 6.2 to 6.8 million. And then the next paragraph says, as of this writing, we've committed $5.6 million to the past budget. And then, back earlier this month, on the 10th, when we adopted the budget, Slide 32 said that we had completed allocations to the African American program of 3.12 million, plus we have summer allocations, anticipated at about 3.5 million. So I guess what I'm literally wondering here is like, right now, we passed a budget. How much, can we, are we able to say how much is in that budget right now to support African American student achievement? And maybe that's a question for Dr. Wald, or maybe you know that, or that's not Andy.
Well, what we do know is, we know our total revenue. That's what we know. So we know all the money that we're getting in next year. And so now we're in this process of reallocating dollars to support the resolution, the strategies, the work. And so, you know, that's what we're doing right now. So we're not getting new money, but we are little by little saying, okay, we now can move this money over. We now can move this money over. We found another way to do X, kind of to Ms. Cuevas's point. What are we willing to give up? Okay, we're not going to be able to do that. We're going to do that in a different way so we can make this money available. Initially, the resolution was driven by this idea, or the money connected with the resolution was driven by this idea of proportional representation through the supplemental concentration, right? So that's where we now say, okay, if we're going to follow that format at 6.2 to 6.8 million dollars, but we know that that's not easy for us to get to out of supplemental dollars this coming year. That's hard. It's even harder in the budget situation. So we are saying, what can we give up around the district in other places? What do we have that can be put towards this effort? And so that's how we're getting there, right? So the board decided to put another million and a half from the SRO contracts there, so that adds to the pool. So that's how we're getting there.
Okay, thank you for that. On Slide 36, a third up from the bottom bullet says, ensure the contracted vendors meet set objectives before renewal and establish clear AMOs for new work. Updated process in progress. And I'm really happy to see us write that down. And, you know, we have all these programs that we're operating right now. And as of the end of the year or as of some point in time during the year, we're actually running these programs with the sense that we're going to be able to tell, we're going to know that they had goals and objectives, and we met them, or we met them partially because of COVID. I'm just wondering, like, with all of the current things we're doing, and I don't, I don't know which of them, quote, work well, or are they meeting their goals? Or they're working, but if we did something else, would it work better? So I'm just kind of wondering, do we have anything in place to be measuring the efficacy of the programs we have in place right now?
We do, we do. I think, you know, folks have asked that we strengthen that, but, you know, every contract does demand a set of deliverables. Every service provider has a set of targets that they need to hit. So we have absolutely something to measure against that at the end of the year. You know, the COVID situation makes things a little bit different because we have to take that into account. But for anybody who's coming back to work with us, we do have what they said their stated objectives were, or their deliverables, as you see in the contract. And I know we've talked about that in detail, and we have something to measure it against. We have some of those are finished and in where providers have sent in year-end reports. We're analyzing that. And I know both Dr. Wald, who's in charge of contracts, and Martine Blake, who's in charge of community partnerships, continue to work together to make sure that that process is strong.
Thank you. I have one last question here. I have to confess, I'm not completely clear on how the amount in the past budget is related to or is the same as, or is different than the 7 million, or the 6.2, or the 6.8, or whatever we're basically saying we're going to assign as a result of the AASAT resolution?
Sure, I'll try to explain that. So in the past, as part of the L cap, the supplemental concentration, we had lots of different programs that we would fund. One of them was PASS, the programs for African American students. And that was around $800,000, I believe, maybe a little bit more, that we allocated annually through L cap, through the supplemental concentration. So what we're going to do now is we're going to create a PASS budget or a PASS fund where monies that are coming from different buckets will funnel into that PASS budget. And we'll have a PASS budget that's sort of cumulative, I guess maybe is a good word to use, that covers it. So money might be coming in from supplemental, coming in from former police contracts, et cetera, et cetera. But it will form one pot of dollars that then can be allocated out.
Okay, and is that essentially the AASAT money? Or is it still a little bit different than the AASAT money?
Well, I think that's something we're going to have to work to clarify because I think the AASAT is just like the MDAC or other groups there to give strong recommendations about how we use that dollar, how we use those dollars. So, you know, just like the MDAC. MDAC gives recommendations about how to use Title III dollars or how to use DL cap dollars for supporting English learners. ASAT gives recommendations, presents a budget, and we work together in that. And then obviously the staff brings forward to the board the final budget.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Josie Panas, Josie Latta.
Yes, thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. I, first of all, want to thank our student trustee, trustee Dohit. Because every time you speak, not only do you identify those problems, it's a lot of people identify those problems, but what I notice is that you do some, you, you contribute something. You come up with an idea. You are constructive in that way. And I, and, and that's, that's what, you know, is, is powerful in your, in your, when you speak. And I'm grateful for that. You know, I'm, thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough, but like has been, you know, those programs are called interventions. They're called interventions for a reason. Because the system is broken. So we need these interventions to try to bring up, you know, people that are, if only through the cracks. And so the problem really is beyond, yes, the interventions. I mean, there's parts of those that are just beautiful. They work there. We've had some great success, but the problem is really systemic. The problem is really institutionalized. And it's not just our district. It's everywhere and it's all districts. And it's this society, it's systemic racism and it's deep, deep, deep structural. And that is the work. That is the real work to identify those structural policies that perpetuate and maintain the systemic racism. And, you know, sometimes I think it's, it's almost, it's not what they say, normalized. We don't recognize it sometimes. It, and that's, that's the harder work. And it's harder to solve, of course. But that's where we got to start, I think. But maintaining of these interventions are, are great. And I think part of those, there's pieces in there that are real gems. And you think, well, then that, what they're doing there, that should be institutionalized. That should become a place, not a, an intervention that's separate from, from the district. So there's a way that these, a lot of these have, can be and need to be blended in with what we're doing. And so I'll just end with that, that this is a lot, a lot, lot more work than, oh, than we realize. And, but I, I'm always an optimist and I think we can get to work and identify those policies and, and help to change them, get rid of them, or think of new policies and better policies. And that's, I think, where the work is. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Josie Latta. So I, I want to begin sharing my perspective just on, on the way that, you know, thank you, Mr. Duffy, for the presentation. But on the way that there's a difference between schooling and education. And I think that a lot of the, the way that I think African American students and other students too have been schooled, not necessarily educated in the way that they should be, like their peers, like their white peers, is something that we cannot ignore. And I want to thank Student Trustee Vasquez Simula for sharing his experience and talking again about, you know, where he's coming from with his ideas and, and just really being open and straightforward about his perspective on having peer support groups and black student unions that, that provide that type of support and mentorship across the board to peer groups and peer organizations. And so I just, I think about the, the purpose of schooling versus the purpose of education. So if, if we're going to do schooling, we're going to teach about procedures, about processes, about how to do things, how to do things that are necessary, you know, for adult life, but with a focus on, on the how to, on the mechanical as well. And, and when we think, when I think of boarding schools, of schools that are for assimilation, it's a lot about the cultural norms that are passed down. And when, when I think of education, I think about the knowledge, the actual critical thinking, the values, the, the content, the curriculum that is used, that gets passed down and that is used to, to teach students, to enable them to grow their brains, not just to learn how to do something for the sake of doing it because somebody told you that you have to know how to do it. But you actually understand the reason why you need to be growing and learning and what your purpose and outcome is as a learner, as a student. So I, I appreciated the questions and the points that the other trustees brought up. And I, I would really like for us to see a use of an evaluation tool that is not just specifically basing off the metrics of success of a program or service specifically for African American students, just based on self-reported assessments. I think that we need to have accessible, transparent and deliverable outcomes that are measured through an actual evaluation tool that, that can be easily accessible. Not only self-reported, I think that should be part of it too, but that is, from what I was reading more self, the self-reported was more qualitative. So I think that we have to blend in the story of qualitative data with quantitative data. Like, what are the actual outcomes of the kids enrolled in these programs and receiving these direct services? And how are they being used to reach the larger African American student population across the district, not necessarily have bubbles of success, but how do we expand that so that we have a larger, you know, reach, enrich more African American students with these programs and services? And so I, I just want to ask, you know, that's my first question, Mr. Duffy. What are we going to do as a district to ensure that we have an evaluation tool that does not consist only of self-reported assessments, but the actual, you know, annual measurable outcomes? And how are we going to, to do that? Now, since we're in the middle of a pandemic and we want to make sure that we do reach all the kids that we can with that funding specifically, but how do we ensure that we renew contracts that are actually going to show success and have shown success? Not just in specific populations within African American student enrollment populations, but how do we actually expand that success to, to a larger reach of the African American student population? So I guess my question, sorry, went a little bit off topic a little bit, but what, what evaluation tool are we going to use? Because I think that there have been a few things that have been presented to us, but I want to know more than self-assessment reported by, by the actual organizations providing the services. What are we going to have for us to, to stand and say, okay, these are the things that are working. So these are the things that we're going to continue?
Well, I would, I would answer that in a couple of ways. And I think it goes to some of the points Trustee Panas is making often on the dais, that it's about the AMOs that are set up and established. Because I think you have to ask the providers to do their final reports. They are accountable to that. But we have to then look at those and make the determination based on what's reported and what's written if we believe it's the outcomes were strong enough. So there was a template that was put together earlier this year through the DL cap. And both Martine Blake and Dr. Wald are working on that and making sure the AMOs are strong for the following year. You know, we have, over the years, determined that we would reduce a contract. We would not continue a contract. We would expand a contract based on outcomes for students. So I want to be clear, we're not, not looking at these things. But we do know folks have asked us to make that process even stronger. And we've had some models produced by a couple of people and that's what we're working on. So I hope that you will feel confident as you see these things come to you at the beginning of the year that what we're asking to be evaluated, to be measured is clear. Because if it's not, then we have to continue to discuss that before anything moves forward.
Thank you. So when can we expect that deliverable that you mentioned, that evaluation tool that Ms. Blake and Dr. Wald are working on to come back to the board?
You would see that on, well, we passed some contracts at the last meeting and you, you may have seen the way that was formatted. But we'll make sure on the July fifteenth, when any contracts are coming, that it's clear the tools that we're using to develop and measure. So you can see that at the beginning of this, the cycle of the school year.
Thank you. And I think it would be helpful to, for the board, and I know for myself too, and potentially for members of the community, to have, to have the draft of it, to actually see it without all of the input in it so that we can look at just like the skeleton of what does this look like, this tool? I think that will provide a lot of clarity. Thank you. Thank you. And you know, I, I'm thinking right now, there's, there's other sections in the presentation that I'm going to address, but I was thinking back about the presentation that we had at our last board meeting and the conversation that we had in regards to the students that were not reached during distance learning, during the last six weeks, I believe. And I think the total was seven hundred and thirteen, right?
That, yes, we're down to about a hundred something right now through the really intense efforts of the last three weeks. So we'll be able to have that for you at the next board meeting. But our, our SCOWs and everybody else has been working around the clock to figure out who knows those students, to make sure we've connected with them. So we're down to about a hundred students right now that we haven't connected with.
Thank you. And so from, from a hundred students that we haven't connected to since the last board meeting, right? When we were talking about this?
Well, I was looking at the data today. I don't have it pulled up in front of me. So that's the number I was looking at today. I think the number at the last board meeting, I can't remember what that was.
Yeah, but my question was more, I guess, about, so since the last, so the last six weeks of school, it was over seven hundred students, right? The last six week of school?
Well, no, there were seven hundred students that we had just not accounted for over the three months. They hadn't been marked present at any time over those last three months.
I find that I had previously understood that it was seven hundred and thirteen in the last six weeks. Okay, so then, so then since the last time that we reported that number, about six hundred students have been contacted?
Yes.
Okay, so, and, and I don't remember the specific demographic data breakdown, but do you, do you have that information with you? Or can that be looked up if, you know, how were African American students affected? Like, what percentage did they make up of that total number?
Sure, I can get that for you. It'll take me just a couple of minutes, but I can pull that up.
Okay, thank you. Because I think I, I'm looking at the suspension rates, right? And I'll keep on talking, you know, while you're looking that up. But I, I was looking at the suspension rates on page ten of the presentation and the fact that our African American students total eighteen to twenty percent of our total student enrollment in the district, right?
Down to about fifteen percent now.
Fifteen this year?
Yeah.
So fifteen percent. So then twelve percent of that fifteen percent is affected disproportionately by that suspension rate. I mean, that is, that is really high. And I know that it's, it's lower and it's, it's been higher before. In fifteen sixteen, it was fourteen point seven. Sixteen seventeen, it was fourteen point four. Seventeen eighteen, it was fourteen point eight percent. And then eighteen nineteen, twelve point nine percent. And I just think it's, it just really blows my mind that it's still that high. I know it's, it's gone down about two percentage points. But that, to me, speaks about the way that classroom management is done and, and, you know, identification of student needs early on. Because I think that we need to have classroom management that is anti-racist and that doesn't overly target disproportionately African American students. And I think that's a bigger conversation that we are going to need to have part of it now, but it's going to be continuous because like, like somebody else on the board said earlier, it's not just about one PD and we're done and things are solved. Like, no, it's gonna, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a long time to get this work done, right? But we have to start somewhere. And I think also, I just, I want to share, you know, I don't know if you have the number, you know, if you want to share the percentage?
Yeah, so the number of students, sorry, to clarify that we still haven't contacted is one ninety six. And the, of that, twenty six percent are African American.
Okay. So that would still, I mean, would you call that also disproportionately high for the enrollment of African American students?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, thank you for, for confirming that. Yeah, I think that all of these are not happening on a, you know, exclusive basis from each other. I think we see a pattern. And I want to echo, you know, what Trustee Vasquez Simula was talking about, that these are things that we have seen for years. And I know some work has been done and I hear about Sanford Harmony, about seeds and implicit bias training. And it's, it's great to get started with this, but I just worry that we're not going to have a long-term plan. Like, we may have a vision, but I think I really want us to focus on a plan and, and talk about what does it look like to, to ensure that, you know, the, the exact process for AP courses and enrollment for incoming and continuing high school students is, is not colorblind? What does it look like to actually be actively promoting anti-racist practices? And I actually don't have an answer for, for what the process is for AP courses enrollment or placement for incoming or continuing high school students. So if you can, you know, just let me know. If you can explain that, that would be greatly appreciated because I actually don't know. And I know from my own experience in another school district, it was very arbitrary and it was up to the counselor. So I just want to know if you can shine some light on what does the AP course placement look like for incoming and continuing high school students?
Sure, well, I would like to take an opportunity to share that is exactly why we're working with equal opportunity schools for that very reason. So, you know, this is one of the, the programs that we are, we're doing because we've called out explicitly that we see massive disproportionality in AP classrooms. And that program is helping us and helping our schools make sure the process to get into AP classes is equitable and clear. So those courses do have some type of prerequisites, but they are actually meant to be open to every single student. And if any student decides they want to take an AP course, they are supposed to be allowed to be in that AP course. Now, there's often prerequisites that help say, you know, this is really what you need. And I can get you those, how we're doing that across the board. I don't have that in front of me. But the idea, of course, is that everyone has access. And I will certainly say, I did not see that work being done. And that's an organization we've brought in to help us because it is obvious that we don't have enough African American and Latino students in AP, honors, IB, advanced music, et cetera.
Thank you. So I, yeah, I think that that's something that we need to clarify. I think a lot of the processes in our, in our district, I'm glad to hear that. I just think that we need a bigger push still to see what does that look like before kids get to high school too? And, and direct interventions as part of the core programming and instructional experiences of African American students, not necessarily just after school or supplemental or in addition, but built into the actual educational experiences of African American students. And I think that we need to have clear, also targeted efforts. How do we build our interventions to be anti-racist? What does really, reading intervention look like in support for instruction and social emotional learning during distance learning for African American students in the fall semester? I think that these are questions I have that I think other parents, other teachers have. Because it's, it's, it's very clear to me that African American students have been disproportionately affected by this pandemic. And, and I know many other students have as well, for sure. I would say that each child who has had their educational experience, their formal education interrupted, has experienced setbacks. But I think that we already knew that there were patterns that were affecting African American students more disproportionately and negatively than other students in our district. So I, I would really like for us to continue to have this conversation and, and address that and, and call things for what they are so that we can identify them and address them collectively. And, you know, talking about the evaluations, we talked about the AMOs. We talked about what does it look like to ensure programs work? In addition to that, I think that we also need to focus on Um in addition to that, I think that we also need to focus on on implicit bias training. And I know trustee Phillips was making um some points about PD and what does it look like to to actually say you have to do this um PD. It's not actually optional. It's something that we need you to do. Um because we need you to be the best equipped as possible to to really ensure that all of our kids are cared about and cared for and taught with the dignity and with the urgency that they need to. And I think that will guide us to have specific understandings, expectations and requirements in place of what do we uh need from each site leader and educator uh to embody as they teach African American students and and see them from the lens through the lens of equity and and for who they are. Um and I, and I just think, you know, if any of the work that has been done in terms of reopening schools or um planning, not just imagining education in the fall semester and the next school year. Um like, are we, are we looking at it through the experiences of African American students growing up bilingual? Being enrolled in DLI schools needing support that may not be readily addressed or even identified yet? Are we looking at it through the perspective of um African American students who are not being taught to read by third grade? Um, I mean, it's it's four full years. And I think that's, that's my struggle and my issue with this is that we have TK, Kinder first and second. We have four full years of brain plasticity. You know, kids have amazing brains that they can build on. New learning experiences with previous experiences and activate their prior knowledge and are fully capable when we take the right actions, but early on and with urgency. And I just cannot emphasize that, you know, I don't see that we have enough in those first four we- four years before they get to third grade. Um to say like, these are the targeted interventions we're doing, because we see these patterns, we recognize these patterns, they repeat over and over. And if they're not reading by third grade, we know the very likely implications of high school. And if they're not having a successful high cl- high school experience, we know the very um, you know, transparent outcomes of that high school experience. And we know what that translates, translates to when they go to the um college or job market, or, you know, their experiences post-graduation. So it's all linked together. And I think that we have to do our part as a district to ensure that we disrupt these patterns and and we need to identify them. Call them out and make plans to address it, but real plans, because I think vision sounds great, reimagining, I love that, I'm all for that. But then, without a plan, we're not actually gonna get there. And I think that so far, we've identified a lot of things that that we need to make plans for. And you know, I I want us to be able to have a conversation about, you know, the majority of African American students are reading, you know, at a proficient, fluent or advanced reading levels by third grade. I want us to see, okay, we're having these interventions. If if by the time you're first grader who wasn't one of our schools in TK and kindergarten, if they're not knowing their alphabet, there's something going on that we need to address. It's not the child's fault. It's not the child's um inability. They're fully able to do it fully. But it's up to the adults in the room and the adults that need to teach them that. And I think we're all capable of teaching them too, but we need to make sure that we're we're identifying what we need to disrupt, so that we can ensure that they get the best education possible. And I think, you know, having conversations with parents and and just reflecting on distance learning versus in-person learning. I've also had, you know, very interesting narratives and and just things that have been shared with me that I think that we need to not repeat and mirror racial disparities that exist within schools and outside of schools once kids grow up. Um I think that we we need to continue to pass on a growth mindset and not a fixed mindset and say, you know, like all African American kids in our district, with all the necessary instruction, intervention, support and resources are going to be successful. And they're gonna be able to read by third grade. They're gonna be proficient in math. They're gonna have the same outcomes that their white peers are having. And and I just think that we need to really focus on the science and the the instructional pedagogies that are gonna get us there. Um and really remove all of the extra politics that don't come into play to this. And I'm almost, I'm about to wrap up right now, because um I know that probably other people may wanna share again, or Superintendent Duffy, if you have any responses. But I think that we really have to focus on on the things that we can change and that we can no longer accept, like having anti-racist classroom management policies. Like, what does it look like to really look at it? Am I targeting students because of something that I'm unaware of? Am I being implicitly biased towards a group of students? And and how do I identify that? And not just to educators, but principals, um anybody that works with children, anybody that has any contact with uh children, because children are impressionable. Anything that we do may have a lasting impact on them. So I think that's what we need to really have a vision of educational equity that centers their experiences and and what they expect and need from us. Because quite frankly, there's no reason why a third grader, a third grade African American student should not be able to read. All children should be able to read by the age, by the, by a grade three. Um because they, you know, if they're in formal education, they would have had at least four full years of education. If they went to TK or preschool as well, or three years if they started in kindergarten. So like scientifically, there's not a reason why they should not be able, they shouldn't be able to read by third grade. It's just a matter of the systems and the interventions and the commitments that we make to supporting their cognitive and um brain development and actually socialize them in a way that sets them up for success. And and yeah, so I I definitely think that we need to have data sessions where we hash this out. We need to have a planning sessions. We need to have an anti-racist framework of education committee. And and we need to look into creating an office of diversity, equity and inclusion, because I I know that you know, we have multiple people working on things, but stringing it together to to create an action plan. And and I understand our funding is limited, but I think that all of us on this board, and I think everybody in the cabinet understands the urgency of this. And and it's really to benefit all students. That's, that's about it. But yeah, I just think we need, we need a lot of work to do. And this is, again, the tip of the iceberg. And and I don't want to repeat another presentation um without new information and new planning. Thank you. Superintendent Duffy?
Sure. Um, thank you for all the comments and thoughts. I'd like to certainly respond to a few things, especially the idea that we've done nothing or very little over the last uh number of years. I would really um challenge that. I I don't, I didn't see anything uh when when we walked in the door um to help the situation where one-third of the teachers in the district were coming in and out of the Kennedy family. And our work to do something about that and support our students um there, you know, I think we not perfect, called out, raised the flag and said, we're gonna do something different at Stige Elementary School. The idea to even open an office of African American student achievement. Um, the desire by the board to build more ethnic studies courses and our staff out there supporting schools and teachers to do that. Um, the demand by the board certainly to ensure literacy through the the TC adoption and really doing everything we possibly could do uh to support that. Really strengthening student safety across the board uh with new infrastructure um in our district. So I mean, I could go on to talk about the many things uh that have happened. You know, I'm of course disappointed that our CST scores, not CSTR, Sback scores uh haven't been better. You know, I I'm the first one to say I'm very disappointed by that. Um, but I think to say that um the staff, and that would be all staff, have have done very little over these last four years, I think is is just really uh not true. And I think we should, we should be really clear about um you know, what has happened. You know, we heard parents, black parents also ask us for more options, better options. And we worked to start to create new schools and and new programs and see what we could do there. Um and I would say, you know, I I really hear the caller about Kennedy High School. That's a place like, in my heart, I know that caller is right. It has to get better. And, you know, the idea, uh, we heard from some black staff tonight saying, hey, take a look at what we're doing. And I would also ask the board to, for us to 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 not only focus just on the CST, the Sback score alone. There's a lot of good things that are happening inside of our schools. And we've gotta make space for that. Um and allow ourselves to talk about those things. And I'm proud of those staff. And I know our communication has to continue uh to get better. Um so, you know, we have started to address many of the things that have been called out. There's plenty of work to do. Uh we'll continue to get after it. Uh but I really wanna make sure uh folks are clear that uh we haven't, you know, been sitting on our laurels, that people have been getting after it and one hundred percent dedicated to to making improvements. So you know, there's, there's a lot we can say. I think we're all really, at the end of the day, working toward the same goals. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of feedback, taken a lot of notes um from the board and from community and look forward to putting the kind of plan in place that uh folks feel is clear, transparent, aggressive, uh and gets us where we need to go. So thanks for giving me a little time to to respond. I really appreciated all the comments this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Duffy.
President Hernandez Jarvis?
Yes, trustee Vasquez Simula.
Could I ask Mr. Duffy a really quick question?
Yes.
Mister Duffy, I just want a really honest answer from you. Do you think that the district is doing enough for the black students, for the African American students? I just want just your opinion. I don't want any of the factual or any evidence or any of that, just from your own opinion. Um, because obviously you know quite a bit, seeing how, I mean, you're the superintendent. So just your opinion.
Sorry. Um, I think we can do more. I really do think we can do more. I think we can do more. I think we can do better. And I think it's a combination of district-wide initiatives, but it's also like looking deep inside schools, right? You're at El Cerrito High School. You have to dig in with your colleagues to say, what's what's going on here? Like, the master schedule that you have, which is an incredibly unique master schedule at El Cerrito High, does that benefit African American students, right? And if not, do we need to really take a look at that? And who benefits the most from having an accelerated curriculum where a year is squeezed into, you know, half the year? So I think we have to do a lot more. Um, I think we have to get after it. And I think it is a combination of the ownership at the district level. I think it's an ownership at the site level. And then even at the board level, we're gonna have to really prioritize. I think going back to trustee Cuevas, like, what can we live without? It also means not just what can we live without in terms of money, but what can we live without in terms of time? Because our time is a limited asset. And if we wanna spend time talking about this, then we have to spend less time talking about other things. And so we've gotta make that sacrifice as well. So, you know, this is really, at the end of the day, you know, I think why we are here. Um, so I hope that answers some of your question.
I think that it does partially answer, and I think you are, I do agree with you um on most of it. Um, I I have a follow-up question real quick to that, though. Um, you are definitely right that it has to do a lot of times internally. And I definitely agree with that. But I think the other problem that we have here is that even if a student does see a problem intern- um within their school or whatever, they don't know what they can do as students. Especially as an African American student who maybe has been put down by the teacher so many times, they just don't know what to do next, or they just, they've, they've lived their whole life being told whatever from a white teacher that they just now just don't know how to respond to it, right? So you are, I I definitely agree that these are internal within schools as well as the whole district. But then what can a black youth do or a ba- a black student do within their own uh school to fix that?
Yeah, and I would also say, on the other end of that, students of privilege often feel like they can speak up, that they, they feel that they can say, I have a problem with what's going on here. And they have the privilege to say that and to, you know, make the complaint or feel very confident that they can do that. So I I would love to partner with you to continue to think about what are the structures we need to put in place. You know, whether that's stronger BSUs, whether that's stronger student governments, whether that's stronger um advocates, where students can say, this happened to me and I didn't like it. And and there's somebody that they can go to. Um and we need to make sure that that's available at every school, that students feel like something just happened that was wrong in my class, and I have a place to go talk about that, and it's not gonna get pushed under the rug. Um, so I think at the end of the day, we have to hear from students more. Uh because at the end, we're here for you. You're our clients at the end of the day. Um and we've gotta make sure we're hearing from you. Part of what we wanted to do with that, uh and your, your fellow students wanted to do with moving from the Healthy Kids Survey to the Youth Truth Survey, and that was all student-driven. Um, was so that they would have a simpler way of being able to tell the story of what was happening at their school. And so I think we did the first by adopting the youth truth. And now we have to figure out what's the response structure where youth can lead that and say, you know, only fifteen percent of the kids at our school said they're engaged. Or only ten percent of African American students said they like coming to school. And students can help lead that debrief um of that data, because we have a lot of data. Um so I'm open, wide open to figuring out that together. So our students don't feel vulnerable and don't silence themselves.
I think the main thing that I got from all that, Mister Duffy, is that you do agree with me that students should be the ones that are like, not should be the ones, but should have a bigger role in all of this. Um and in the black community, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's just one thing that I didn't hear in the presentation you had. And that's okay. Um, I just hope that that's something that we can do better in the future with.
Yeah, a- and I'm sorry that wasn't called out as strongly, because I I think we, I certainly do believe that um that we need to make sure your voice is front and center. Um, because you experience the learning and the education, and you have to be the one who says, this is working, this isn't working.
That is true. Thank you. That's all I have. I appreciate it.
Thank you, uh trustee Vasquez Simula and Superintendent Duffy. Do any board members have any final comments or questions before we move on to our first action item?
President Hernandez Jarvis?
Phillips?
I do. Um, this won't take long, but um Mister Duffy, I want you to to try to hear, hear what I'm saying. Uh, I didn't say that over the last four years nobody who works for the district has done anything. Uh, and I'm asking you to try to hear me. I don't know what you're doing right now. Uh, but thank you. Uh, so I want to give some examples. When you just, you just ticked off a list of things. You said, I was, I'm not the fastest typer, but I was trying to type. You said the Kennedy Family Initiative. Then you said Stige. Then you said TC adoption, which is Teachers College adoption, adoption. Uh, then you said safety. Then you said new schools. Then you said the the Office for African American Student Achievement, which we understand there's been some hiccups with that. But that's one, two, three, four, five, six things that you said as as evidence that this work is being done. But only one of those things is targeted to African American students. That's the point that I was trying to make. This presentation is about African American students. But the majority of the things that you're ticking off to support or show evidence that you have been providing interventions or doing works for these students in particular are things that are not targeted for African American students. Teachers College is not for African American students. It's for all students. The Kennedy Family Initiative is not for African American students. It's for every student in the Kennedy family. The Stige, the Stige, the Stige redo. Yes, African American students go to Stige, but that's not for African American students. It's for whoever's going to Stige. The CSOs, the safety redo that has been happening in the training, and it's something I've supported. But that's not for African American students. So I'm asking you to hear me. I'm not saying that over the last four years absolutely no work has been done. We're not talking about work in general, however. We're talking about work specifically targeted to African American students. And what I'm saying is, that's not what I'm hearing in this presentation. And I'll give you an example if we can make this even more clear, right? If we were in a presentation about special education students and the needs that they had, you wouldn't say, well, we're doing the Kennedy Family Initiative and we're doing Stige and we're doing TC adoption and we're doing safety and we're opening up some new schools. Because that has absolutely nothing to do with special ed. If we were doing an EL presentation, an English learner presentation, you wouldn't tick those things off, because those things have absolutely nothing to do with the EL. with the ELs in particular. That's what I'm trying to convey. And, and then the, the, two, two more things that I want to bring up very quickly. I understand that folks have different views around test scores and whatnot. And I understand you want us to look at more the test scores. And I get that, because there's more that goes on in a school than test scores. And that's 100% true. But we want our kids to be able to read. And we want our kids to be able to do math. And yeah, I could look at all of those other things. But at the end of the day, this black parent, and my black wife, and my black everybody else, we want our kids to be able to read and to do math. And so, we're gonna keep focusing on those scores as long as they're there, because they indicate something. They indicate that our children are not performing at the level that they should. And then the last thing that I wanna, I wanna say is, is this. And this is just some perspective for folks. I am very glad that we're looking at making sure that AP classes are open to all students. And that it is not black kids, Latino kids, that the majority of our student body are not prohibited from taking these classes. But when eight out of 10 black students are not proficient in English language arts, and nine out of 10 black students are not proficient in mathematics. And since we're going there, our Latino students don't score much higher. It's about the same numbers. And that's the truth. So, because this AP thing is, it affects both of them. So, when essentially, I think, well, when you have eight out of 10 who aren't proficient in ELA, and nine out of 10 that are not proficient in math, what does it mean that we're spending our time trying to make sure that the kids could be in AP courses? They can't do the AP courses. If they could do the AP courses, then we wouldn't have the proficiency problems that we have. Now, for the children who can do that work, yes, it should be open to them. And that is great that we're making changes or strides around that. But we need to look much deeper at this issue. Because, yeah, it's great to say, "We're gonna open up AP classes," but the truth is 90% of the black kids can't, aren't proficient in math. It's a joke. So, I know you don't agree. I don't expect you to agree. But, and it's the same thing for the Latino children. They might have 5% higher. So, 85% of them are not proficient in math. But they could take the AP courses. What does that even mean? It means, it means nothing, except for the select number of children who actually could do those classes. So, I just would hope we would actually look deeper at this stuff and just not go for easy points that we could put up on the board. Because that's what I, what I heard today.
Well, I'd like to just briefly
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Respond to that. So, a couple of things. You know, I hear Trustee Phillips saying two things. What's, what are we doing only for African-American students? But I also hear you saying that African-American students and Latino students are so closely together in their performance. And I want to build off that, which is our students go to school together in schools. So, many of the things that we're gonna do are whole-school initiatives, whole-system initiatives, whole-classroom initiatives. And they're aimed to improve everybody. And then we're also targeting certain things for certain populations. So, yes, actually, if you ask me about special ed, I would talk about what we're doing in the whole school to make sure access is there for our special education students. So, when we try and work to improve literacy and teacher training in teaching reading, it is an attempt at dealing with the whole situation. When we deal with STEGE, which is 50% African-American, it is a whole-school attempt. And then when we target things like Mafanikio, Bright Futures, Rising Scholars, those are very specific things targeted to African-American students. I think we have to continue to talk together about what the vision is and the shared vision is. When I talk, I hear you talk about "Let's Go Learn" is that saying, "We want a Let's Go Learn license just for each African-American student." Or are you saying, "I want Let's Go Learn license for everybody, because I think it will benefit those African-American students?" Because if we were to do that, then it would, we would want to know, "Are we doing that for everybody, and we think it benefits African-American students? Or are we just buying a license for those students? And is that what we're talking about, just buying certain things for certain students?" So, I'm eager to get into those conversations and continue to talk about what are we doing for all, since we have many students not performing? And what are we doing that's very targeted? And I believe we are doing both. But if we want to shift, make a shift there, then we need to continue to talk about that and just be really clear what our theory of action is together around how we move that forward. And I think that's the conversation about where are we on that continuum of how much that's solely and specifically only for African-American students, but knowing that they spend seven hours of their day in school with everybody else. What are we doing inside the school experience that's going to benefit them? So, I see it as both. And I'm certainly open, I think we're all open to continuing that conversation about what we're doing that falls in that continuum of all, within the whole-school day experience, and specific and targeted.
If, if I may, President Hernandez Jarvis, two things.
Yes, Trustee Phillips.
Thank you. When I'm talking about "Let's Go Learn", I personally believe that "Let's Go Learn" should be available to all the children in the district. I believe that it should come down out of the hills and be made available to everybody. That, so, that, I mean, I brought it up in this conversation because it fit, but when I am talking about that, I'm saying, and I just want to be very clear, that I think it should be made available to everyone. And then as far as the idea of what's happening at the school, or schools in general, and then what's happening for African-American students in particular, I do think it's both. I do think it's both. Because, right, they're not going to be, like, I just, about 15 minutes ago, I said, "I don't think that they should be segregated into a class all by themselves," right? So, I do think that it's both. I do, so I do think that's part of the conversation. I, I do agree with that, but the majority of what I've heard in this presentation has been about students in general. Not African-American students. And then the things that I have heard that were specific to African-American students, for the most part, they're, they're legacy programs, things that have been going on for a very long time. And so, when I'm talking about what has happened around African-American students in particular, you know, when we got here, there was a, when you got here, there was a problem. When I was, you know, when my, when my dad was a child here, there was a problem. And so, what I'm really saying is, when I say what has happened over the last four years, I'm not saying it general, because this is the conversation with African-American students in particular, but what, where is the innovation? Because even though we have all of these legacy programs, if we're just gonna be honest, we still haven't gotten to where we need to be, even with those programs. Right? And so, that doesn't mean they all need to go away, because I think that there are some good ones. But what targeted things are being done differently? Because where we are right now is worse than where we were four years ago. So, I agree, and I'm done, but I agree, it is both, because they have the experience that all of the kids have. And so, I do appreciate that, but just if it's a conversation about African-American students, or if it's a conversation about ELs, or if it's a conversation about sped students, then I, I prefer to really hear how we're drilling in on those students in specific, and not just what's going on in the general universe of school. And that's what I was trying to express.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Thank you, Master Superintendent Duffy, and thank you to the rest of the board members as well for this conversation, and for members of the public too, who share their public comments and who have been here tuning into our meeting today. I think that right now it's time to move on to our action item, and I just want to thank, and Student Trustee Vasquez Simula and each board member. I think this is gonna be a conversation we're gonna continue to have, and I hear that there's a lot of energy behind continuing this work, so I'm very excited about the next steps and, and the deliverables and report box that we're going to be adding. Thank you. Up next, we have our first action item, D1, Job Description, Director of African-American Student Achievement.
Yes, I'll talk to that. And I just wanted to say, you know, Mr. Phillips said, "I don't know what you're looking at right now." But sometimes I look down at my phone, because I don't have two screens, so like, I'm teeing up the next item. So, pardon me if I look down, because sometimes I have notes either on my paper or in my phone to prep while I'm also trying to look at the screen. So, I'm just bringing something up really quickly. So, as you know, the Director of African-American Student Achievement resigned earlier this month. And when that happened, the asset group wanted to take a look at the job description to really determine if there was anything in there that was needed before hiring the next African-American director. So, they have made, if we could open that attachment. And one thing I just wanted to apologize in advance, because I don't think we bolded what we added here. But there were, there were only two main ads. And I want to find them for you. One was to maintain, analyze, and make available the data on the current status and trend of African-American black student achievement. And the other was to facilitate communication and collaboration between site administrators, SSC, and AIPAC to create SPSA goals. So, if we go down a little bit further, I'll be able to point out those bullets. So, number three is the new one. And number four is the new one. The others were just a couple of grammatical corrections. So, number three and number four were added. One really around data, one really around facilitation at the site level of communication. So, those are the two that were added. We're asking that we approve this, so we can post it tomorrow morning. And I thank the ASAT for getting their team together and making these recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Board, can we have a discussion on this item? Oh, thank you, Trustee Lada or Trustee Cuevas. I'm sorry about that. Mr. Watson, do we have public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. So, we can begin with our Student Trustee Vasquez Simula, and Trustee Cuevas, Trustee Phillips, Trustee Panas, Trustee Lada, and myself.
Would it be okay if I went last?
Yeah. For sure. Thank you. Trustee Cuevas.
Madam Chair, outside of any questions, if there's any reason why we won't be approving this, then I would just like us to do it expeditiously. And move approval of this item, and then go to discussion.
I will second that, but I also have a specific question about it.
Thank you. Motion made by Trustee Cuevas to approve this job description, seconded by Trustee Panas.
Bullet five on the second page. It starts off, it looks like in the middle of a sentence.
You said on the second page?
Yes.
Number five.
I keep getting muted. Somebody keeps muting me. So, I thought we corrected that. I'm sorry, Mr. Panas. The one that's up should be corrected. So, let's see. Can we pull it up again?
So, what I read for bullet five in that page, it says facilitates communication among campus administrators and district departmental leaders to enhance service delivery, program development, and parent satisfaction around African-American student achievement.
Yeah, in the one we posted originally, the facilitates, the verb got left off, so sorry about that, and it's corrected now.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lada, Trustee Phillips.
I'll go after Trustee Laura if she has a comment.
No, I don't have any comments, and I'm ready to move on this.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips.
So, that one line that we were just at with the facilitates communication between the site leadership and, and the AIPAC are, you know, the parents. Yeah, so, yeah, right there. Thank you very much. Can it be changed just a little bit? And the reason why I'm saying it, I don't know what the change is, but there was a problem last time where we had a parent who was the president of her AIPAC, and then she went to communicate with her principal. And essentially, the, the director, I'm gonna say allegedly, because I wasn't there, but the director basically told the principal that the, the president of the AIPAC essentially had to go through him, and, and that so she didn't need to communicate with this person. So, is there, is there a way to say, you know, encourages or helps to facilitate, but I want it to be very clear that if a parent wants to, you know, or, you know, parent leadership at the school wants to, to communicate with the site administrators, that this person is there to help them do that if they need to. But that they don't have to go through them, and that there is a direct line of communication between the SSC, between the, between the AIPAC, because I don't want this person to, to, to be a gatekeeper to administration at the site level. And that, I think, kind of happened last time. So, I don't know. Is there a way to massage, I mean, there is, obviously, there is a way to massage it. Mr. Duffy, if you have any thoughts. Mr. Wold, if you have any thoughts. I know Ms. Williams, the HR person, is on there. I just wanted to be clear that you're supposed to help, you know, ease communication if you can, but you're not. The parents don't have to go through you to talk to their principal. That, that's what I'm trying to say.
I mean, we could change that from facilitates to like supports positive and healthy communication. You know.
Yeah, and I think they should support. I mean, if that's the right language. I, I mean, I don't have anything in, in particular, but I think you get what I'm trying to communicate.
Yep. If you allow us to take a stab at it, you know, after approval, we can work on a little bit of word smithing and post it.
That, that's fine with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Trustee Vasquez Simula.
Yes, so, I wasn't given the agenda ahead of time, so I just had to read over it really quickly now. But Yolanda, Yolanda said that she approved it. And it seems like Mr. Phillips approves it. So, I also approve it then as well.
Thank you, Trustee Vasquez Simula. So, I don't have other comments, other than saying that I just think we need to make sure that we support, you know, the staff that will be in this position in a way that is a collective effort, and not just putting it on one person to, to have the success of African-American students in the district, but you know, building a team effort, for sure. So, I, we have a motion on the floor, and we need to take a vote. It was made by Trustee Cuevas to approve this job description, and seconded by Trustee Panas. Can we please take a vote?
Definitely yes.
Yes, yes.
Lada, yes.
I'm going after Trustee Cuevas. That's where I'm in line.
I went already, but
Oh, we didn't hear you. Sorry. Okay.
Phillips, yes.
Hernandez Jarvis, yes. Motion passes unanimously to approve the job description of Director of African American Student Achievement. Thank you, board.
President Hernandez Jarvis?
Yes, trustee Vasquez Simula?
Could I quickly ask Mr. Duffy to make sure to include youth when we do have these meetings? I know you probably already know this, but I just want to just make sure that, that, well, if you could tell me, because then I could help get it around. Because I do know there is definitely some students who would definitely be down to listen in on some of these interviews.
Yeah, well, we'll have, we will have students on the panel as we do as much as we can. So we can also, you know, if you'd like to do that, or you have suggestions, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you. Great point. Thank you. Up next, we have our second and last action item. D2, Approve Revision to Administrative Regulation 3300, Expenditures and Purchases.
This one is Dr. Wold, so I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
So, good evening. At the last board meeting, there was a request, as we were doing the annual resolutions, to make an adjustment on the purchasing thresholds. This was a big part of tonight's conversation as well, about AMOs and metrics and the work that we're doing. So looking back at the board policy, the board policy actually does not reflect a number there. It's the administrative regulation that provides the direction to staff. So we did go through and make the amendment that trustee Panas suggested into the administrative regulation that for the service contracts that we bring forward, while the district is qualified, we would be bringing those forward at the $25,000 threshold, following all of the different metrics that we've been talking about. And as Superintendent Duffy discussed, we're working on a new template for the summary that provides more of the information and a snapshot, as well as partnership criteria that will ensure that there are annual measurements that can be measured by both the provider and by within the district as we bring forward contracts. We anticipate that this will go into effect for the August board meeting. We're going to try to bring it into effect for the July 15th as much as possible. And then the templates will be presented to the board for review to go into effect either the first sec, either the second meeting in August or the first meeting in September, as we get everything clarified and all the stakeholders. So we would ask the board to approve this administrative regulation, which technically doesn't even need a vote, but we would like a formal vote, so that we are moving in this correct direction.
Thank you, Dr. Wold. Mr. Watson, do we have public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Thank you. Is there a motion by a board member for approval, and we can begin discussion?
I'll move approval of this, but I'm going to actually propose some amendments as well.
Okay. Just the, that was trustee Panas, right? And that was trustee Cuevas. Thank you. Okay, so if we can have the board go in the same rotation that we're going. Trustee Vasquez Simula, Cuevas, Phillips, Panas, and Lada, and then myself. Thank you.
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Vasquez Simula. Trustee Cuevas? Oh, trustee Cuevas, I think your headset is not working. I just saw your image. It's really fuzzy.
Okay. How do we move on? How's that? Is that better?
No, I can understand you, but it's just really, it's super fuzzy. Okay. So you're ready to move on, you said. Thank you. Sorry about that. Trustee Phillips?
I just have a quick question. Dr. Wold, you said you're going to try to put this in place when?
We're going to work to try to get it in place for the July 15th board meeting. The threshold will absolutely be in place for the August board meeting, the first August board meeting. And then the templates will come behind that, the new updated templates.
Okay. Me personally, I think when trustee Panas proposed this, that it was a good idea. And I would like to see this in place for the next meeting. Because we're spending money the entire time, and that was the whole purpose of this. So please, you know, put this in place by then. And then the other thing that I, I'll leave it at that. That's my only request. I support it.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Panas?
Thank you, President Hernandez Jarvis. So I'd like to thank the staff for bringing this forward and bringing the AR forward. Because it's pointed out, this AR has not been updated since 2015. And it points out a couple of things that actually need to be changed. On the second page, the paragraph just.
While we're talking?
On the second page, just above item three, consultant contracts, it says change orders in excess of 10% of the original contract. And in fact, our practice now is either 10% of the original contract amount or that are of an individual value of $250,000 or more. So we need to change that to reflect our current practice. And then going down to the purchasing guidelines on page three. Number three, or reads, the superintendent, executive director, general services. I don't think I could be wrong here. Do we still have an executive director of general service, or has that title changed now?
You're correct, and we should have caught the title there. It should just be the director of business services. There, so we can make those two changes you've defined.
Okay, but then also, you know, what you wrote here, it doesn't actually reflect what, exactly what I had said. Because we left out, the way it's written right now, it leaves out the case of a negative certification. But then also, when I said, you know, when I proposed this, I actually did not mean it should apply to anything other than unrestricted general fund. So back on page two, in three. A and B, in each both A and B, there's a section that reads, unless the district receives a qualified budget outcome, then the amount reverts to $25,000 while the budget remains qualified certification. I think it would be more helpful if we said, unless the most recent interim report did not receive a positive certification, the amount reverts to $25,000 for unrestricted general fund contracts until subsequent interim report receives a positive certification. Because also, it's framed in terms of budget right now, and budgets don't technically receive a certification. That's why I actually picked interim financial statements. So once again, I was like, unless the most, so that, like, for example, 3A would read, consultant contracts costing between $1 and $50,000. And then in parentheses, unless the most recent interim report did not receive a positive certification, in which case, the amount reverts to $25,000 for unrestricted general fund contracts until a subsequent interim report receives a positive certification. So, I mean, that more closely reflects what I'd actually proposed. And also, I'm not convinced that we need to apply this to anything other than unrestricted general fund contracts.
So we absolutely support that. That's actually better language. When we had put in the qualified, that was what we had heard stated. So it's much better language to state it in the positive than in the negative connotation.
Okay, so I'd like to ask, well, I'm the maker of the motion. I'd like to suggest we amend it to reflect those three changes. But then also, you know, as Dr. Wold stated, staff can actually, this is an AR, and so it doesn't have the same force of law that a board policy has. So staff could actually change this at a later date if they pleased, I'm not saying they would, without the permission of the board. So I'm also thinking that we should actually add that same kind of sentence to our board policy 3300 as opposed to AR 3300. And say like, and just add language to board policy 3300. If the most recent interim financial report received a positive certification threshold for board approval versus ratification of contracts is $50,000, otherwise the threshold will be $25,000. So I'd like.
So we looked at, we looked at the board policy that way, and it doesn't have any mention of the 50 or the 25s. We would recommend actually to hold it binding. You add the sentence at the bottom of this AR, that this AR shall not be changed without a formal vote of the board. And that would accomplish the same task, because the board policies checking models do not mention any of the dollar amounts.
Okay, I'm fine with that, if we say this can't be changed without board approval. But I would like to ask.
We'll make those adjustments, and we'll send a copy in the Friday letter with the adjustments in there after approval tonight.
Okay, I'm wondering if the second will accept my modified motion.
I will accept it. I see the point. I think the point is you want to provide oversight when we're in qualified, when money's tight. And that's the reason. But I do want to remind the board that while we do this, we shouldn't necessarily be spending three hours approving every single $25,000 plus one contract. So I just ask that we maintain discipline in both oversight and get the work of the board done. With that, I'll accept your amendments, Mr. Panas.
Thank you. Trustee Panas, can you restate your amendment as well? I typed it, but I think I only got part of it.
Okay, there's actually three, well, actually now there's four places we're changing. So first of all, on the second page, just above the item three, consultant contracts, there's a line that starts board action. Currently reads change orders in excess of 10% of the original contract amount. Actually, our practice now is in excess of 10% of the original contract amount for $250,000 or more. And then there's two places in section 3A and two places in section 3B, where it talks about unless the district receives a qualified budget outcome. I'd like to replace that wording with, unless the most recent interim report did not receive a positive certification, in which case, the amount reverts to $25,000 for unrestricted general fund contracts until a subsequent interim report receives a positive certification. So that's the same text in four places, two places in 3A and two places in 3B. And then on page three, in the purchasing guidelines, item three, we need to update the title of executive director, general services to whatever it is now. And then one more thing, this AR cannot be changed without a vote of the board. That's suggested by Dr. Wold.
Thank you, trustee Panas. So the second for that motion still stands by trustee Cuevas. Board, can we please take a vote?
Sorry, now, yes?
Thank you.
Phillips, yes.
Hamas, yes.
All right, yes.
And then this draft is yes. Motion passes unanimously to approve the revision to administrative regulation 3300, expenditures and purchases with the four changes made by trustee Panas. More than four changes, actually, there's five changes to it. Great, thank you so much. And we're going to have follow up on this item in our Friday memo as well, to ensure that we address all of the changes that were made to it. And, Dr. Wold, is that it? Superintendent Duffy?
That's it.
Madam Chair, this point of order, a quick request. Just a quick request out of respect and honor for our board trustee who passed away this past week. That we honor him, not just, I'd like to kill the death now, just a small moment of silence, but also formally in our next regular board meeting with information about his service to our district, both well and multiple capacities as a teacher, I believe, as a school board member.
I think that's a great idea.
In silence to Mr. Randall Enos.
I think we might want to just repeat that, because you're very fuzzy, just so everybody, I can repeat it.
Yes, please. Thank you, trustee Cuevas.
Yeah, so former trustee Randy Enos, he's actually one of the trustees who hired me and got to know him very well when he was board president those last couple of months. He passed away recently, and he was a teacher and a principal and a trustee and a big part of this district for a long time. So we'll do a full in memoriam for him coming up. But trustee Cuevas asked if we could do a moment of silence this evening for Randy Enos.
Thank you. Thank you, board. Thank you, trustee Cuevas, for staying, sharing this with us right now, and for this moment of silence. Thank you. And we will make sure to have a moment of silence and to honor Ms. Enos with the work that he did here at our next board meeting as well on July 15th. And we have actually completed all of the items for tonight's board meeting. So I just want to, you know, thank everybody again, thank the board, thank the staff. Mr. Duffy, thank the community, thank the students, thank everybody who tuned in, who participated, and who is making every effort to ensure everybody is safe and healthy during this time, especially all children. And I just want to say thank you, and we'll see you July 15th for sure at our next board meeting. And please make sure you wear your mask. Thank you so much. Take care, everybody. Have a good evening. Thank you.